Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your patience with our technology. I call the May 20th, 2024 meeting of the Carver School Committee to order at 7:03 PM. If everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So we are going to start off this evening with a recognition.
Yes, and just before we start, just a reminder, this meeting is being held virtually according to the government Massachusetts March 12, 2020 ordinance suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access the meeting online via Zoom, in the room, in town hall, or via Area 58 Live on television. And we do have one member of the committee who's going to be participating remotely this evening. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. So going on to recognitions, we are excited that Ron Griffin has received the Rising Star Award from the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials. And we're even more pleased that Margaret Driscoll, the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, is here this evening to present the award to Ron. So Margaret, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for inviting me and allowing me to be here and share this good news about Ron's amazing work. Again, I'm Margaret Driscoll, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, also known as MASBO, and so proud to share that our first ever 2024 Rising Star Award is conferred on Ron Griffin. It's our newest award, recommended and sanctioned by our board this year, and it acknowledges the value and contributions of outstanding school business officials within the first 10 years of their school business administrator career for both current accomplishments and sustained contributions. Mr. Griffin's nominator, Superintendent Neef, said in his nomination that during a time of tremendous town-side transition, he has been a great advocate for the district, identifying many ways it was at a comparative disadvantage with other town services, which was impeding its growth. Mr. Griffin worked effectively with the town's leadership to rethink its financial approach and supported key ways that the town adjusted to benefit the schools, including shifting healthcare benefits to a shared town-side cost, moving county retirement from the school's budget to a shared town cost, and counting solar project revenue as new growth to be deployed in the operating budget. Mr. Griffin clearly articulated to town officials how these changes would impact the educational experience of students and supported significant investments in students and facilities, including purchasing a new reading curriculum for the elementary school, adding a TV production studio at the middle high school, renovating the culinary classroom, improving the compensation of all employees, which has trailed behind the state average, and supporting the development of your pathways programs. His multifaceted responsibilities include development and oversight of the school district's budget, managing the transportation and food service departments, working in coordination with the town's Director of Operations and Maintenance to oversee the school district's custodians, managing the district's capital projects, and working in coordination with the school committee and the superintendent to negotiate contracts with all unions. Most impressively, he has worked effectively with the town to implement changes in development of its financial forecast. Superintendent Neef noted that Mr. Griffin is a person of integrity and is bright, honest, and reflective about his practice with an easygoing demeanor, handles many tasks at once, knows how to prioritize, is effective in his role, and given his past experiences as a valued thought partner for the superintendent, he is, simply put, a school leader. Ron, this prestigious award comes with a MASBO-paid trip to the ASBO International Annual Conference and Expo in September to extend and expand your school finance and operations learning and engagement, as well as this small token of appreciation for your wonderful work.
Something you want to come up?
Congratulations.
Guys, you want to do a picture? We have to do a picture. You have to do a picture.
Say we have safety words. But yeah. We all get a picture?
Oh, you can all do a picture. Everybody do a picture.
Yeah. We were just saying, we're proud of Ron. Right?
Yeah, isn't the fight just like that?
Oh, sorry. Well, I know, we always take pictures when our students come. Save money. I'm sorry, one more. Save money. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much for coming. Thank you very much. Very much deserved. Yes, very well deserved. It's nice to see that your hard work is recognized beyond just us. We appreciate you very much, so. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Embarrassing us.
Okay, then. Moving right along to school committee reorganization. So at our last meeting, our newest member, Bill, wasn't able to join us, so we deferred voting subcommittees until they could be present, so he could be part of that discussion. And just as a reminder, because we do have a member that is participating remotely, all of our votes tonight will be roll call votes. So first, we have Policy Subcommittee. That's been Kelly and I this past year. I don't know your thoughts. I would certainly like to remain on policy, but if anyone's interested.
I'm having policy.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Katie, does that a thumbs up I just saw you give? I know, right?
So, but we do need to take a motion. We need to take a motion and a vote on all of the appointments.
Yeah, Katie, you need to unmute. Oh, no. You need to unmute.
I thought I was. I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to appoint Kelly, Mimi, and Stephanie Clarity to the Policy Committee for the 2024-2025. Did I do that right? 2025? I'm sorry, my brain's a little mushy.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. We'll just start with you, Katie.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, thank you. So that next brings us to Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee. This is something that Kelly and I started last year for the first time. The thought process was that we keep this going so that we can expand the superintendent evaluation, so it's more productive for our superintendent and for us. So that is something that I would also like to remain on. Kelly, I'm not sure of your thoughts. So that is next on our list.
I make a motion to reappoint Stephanie Clarity and Kelly Mimi to the Superintendent's Evaluation for the 2024-2025 school year.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, great. So that brings us to, the next subcommittee is Capital Outlay.
I would like to continue. Everybody is okay with that? We haven't voted yet for the previous year, and we're doing that next week, so.
Okay.
I'd just like to put in, I believe that Bill has some great experience here and great knowledge, and he may be a really good appointee to this committee. I don't know how Bill feels about that, but I think he might be a really good appointee.
Yeah, I would also like to serve on Capital Outlay, but like Jackie said, they're about to vote on the year's worth of work. So unless we can kick this can down the road, I wouldn't want to take her spot today, so.
Okay. I mean, that's something that we could do. We could defer if the committee wanted to defer.
Yes, absolutely. That's a choice as well.
So that's up to the will of the committee if you'd like to defer it, and we can discuss it again at our June meeting.
June 10th.
June 10th is our next meeting?
Which would be after town meeting and...
Everything will be settled then, so that's also an option.
And also someone would just have to make a motion. Someone needs to make a motion to that effect.
I move that we defer the decision on the Capital Outlay Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to Student Advisory Committee. I think Katie would like to remain on this committee, given her connections with students and how well she meshes with them. I know this is something that I've been passionate about since we started doing it, so I'm not sure if anyone else is interested, but...
If given the opportunity, I'd like to weigh in a little bit on this one.
Oh, sure.
Only I just feel that for us to be most successful, I think we have to have opportunities to meet with students during the school day. I think that the members of the Student Advisory Council have had... Many of them are very engaged students who are involved in many things, and I think it's been challenged to have students come to meetings in the evening. So, and I know, okay, that makes it a challenge for you. I understand that. But I don't know if we could even balance it and do some meetings during the day and some meetings in the evening. But I think having some availability during the day, in my opinion, should at least be considered in this discussion.
Right, and I want to be clear that I have in the past said I can arrange my lunchtime and do a Zoom meeting with them. I can't make it to the school in person, but for a daytime thing, I could do Zoom meetings.
And Katie, and we did one Zoom meeting last year, I believe, and Katie definitely had said she can make herself available during her lunch break.
Okay. I mean, I have the flexibility to either be on Zoom or make a meeting day a work-from-home day with my job. Like, and I'm not sure if anyone else is interested, but I have that daytime availability flexibility.
And obviously, the other reality of that is that, you know, the students naturally have the wind blocks scheduled into their day. You know, so they have, every day, they have a 30-minute block of time, which they can be available to attend. And then Katie, we could talk about whether we worked your lunch around that. I don't know how much flexibility you have around that, but we could certainly adjust to that.
My classroom teacher I work with is very flexible, so.
Okay. Anyone else? So I move to approve Katie Sullivan and Stephanie Clarity to the Student Advisory.
Okay, I'm on my meeting. I said I'm on my meeting.
I will second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now this brings us to negotiations. Mr. Neef, do you want to talk about the rationale behind the history of how we do this?
Historically, the Chair and the Vice Chair have been the representatives of the teachers' negotiations Subcommittee. There's no official policy to that effect, but that is the past practice, is that the Chair and the Vice Chair serve as the representatives for the teachers' negotiations. And next year, we'll be negotiating with teachers and ESPs. And we finished our negotiations with custodians, and we're currently working on negotiations with bus drivers. You know, so so that I think if Kelly's willing, it would make sense to have Kelly finish through with the current bus driver negotiations that we're in. And then food service and secretaries is definitely, we could... Those are open, and we could be looking at, and I think actually we'll be looking at secretaries next year.
Okay. So should we vote them individually?
Yes, absolutely.
So I'm fine staying on teachers. Well, that's traditionally how we write, so we have, but... And I have lots of experience. Hopefully, nothing can be as bad as COVID, so. Nothing, nothing can be as challenging as that, so. Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion for the Teachers Negotiations Subcommittee.
I make a motion to reappoint Stephanie Clarity and Kelly Mimi to the Teachers Negotiation Committee.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, great. So next up brings us to ESPs. It was Colleen and Jackie. I'd like to stay on it this year, something.
And they'll be up for negotiations next year. And they'll be negotiating next year.
I don't know what that is. I'm surprised.
The paraprofessionals at the schools, the ESPs.
Given my lack of experience at this point, I would defer to the City Board.
Okay. There's two.
Yeah. I'm happy to do whatever, but I don't know, you know, where I might fit in.
Okay.
At this time.
And I mean, my only suggestion would be that I think it is good to...
Bring some experience to that table.
But also to spread the wealth a little bit, too.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Katie, is that something you'd be interested in serving on?
I would do that.
So we just need a motion to that effect for Jackie and Katie.
I move that we nominate Katie Sullivan and Jackie Lake to the ESP Negotiations Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, so next up brings us to custodians.
Which we just finished a contract. And the reality is, being on that negotiations committee, the odds of the committee having to meet is slim, but that doesn't mean that something couldn't come up that would require some sort of a side letter of agreement or some sort of action.
I can pick that up.
Yes, it was you and Colleen. So Bill, is that...
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, ease your way into it. I move that we nominate Bill Cullum and Jackie Lake for the Custodian Negotiations Subcommittee.
A second.
Okay, sorry. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, great. Now that brings us to food service, which is Jackie and was Colleen. So... Did we just negotiate that? I don't know. I thought we'd just throw it out there next year.
That is not a collective bargaining unit. So there is individual work with them, but it's not...
Good luck, Steve.
But there's not a cycle of negotiation with them. So it's as needed. Back up as called as needed. A little bit like the custodians above.
Interested? Okay. Stay right there. I wrote your name down anyway.
No, you didn't.
I did, by mistake, but... Okay, I move that we nominate Jackie Lake and Bill Cullum to the Food Service Negotiations Subcommittee.
A second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Excellent. Okay, so that brings us to secretaries, which is currently myself and Katie. Do you want to remain on that Subcommittee, Katie?
Sure.
And similar to the food service, it's not a collective bargaining unit, but can be called in as needed.
I'm happy to stay on it unless someone else wants to. All right, I move that nominate Stephanie Clarity and Katie Sullivan to the Secretary Negotiations Subcommittee.
Oh, second, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Katie, you sound like you're losing your voice. I know. We're making your talk so much. Sorry, Katie. Okay, so this next one's easy, though. It's bus drivers, and it's going to be Kelly Mimi. So someone just needs to make a motion and second, and we can vote.
I'll make a motion to nominate Kelly Mimi for the Bus Driver Committee negotiations.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Excellent. Okay, so that brings us to... Did we vote? I think we did. We voted Legislative Liaison last year.
We did, we did.
So that's something that I'd like to stay involved with, but if there's someone else that is interested, certainly, you know, willing to have that conversation if you'd like. I move that we nominate Stephanie Clarity to the Legislative Liaison... Sorry. That was a hard question.
A second.
No problem. No judgment.
A second.
No, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, so that brings us to the Appointing Authority for the Old Colony Regional District School Committee. So the Chair serves as executive official, and we need two members. So right now, it is currently myself and Jackie. It was Colleen. So I'm not sure if that's something that you'd be interested in or if someone else is interested in. We're actually going to be meeting to appoint someone once we get our Subcommittee formed, that select boys already voted theirs. It's a pretty simple process that we'll walk you through. So it's a good experience.
Unless anyone else wants it.
Okay, great. Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion? I move that we nominate Stephanie Clarity, Bill Cullum, and Jackie Lake for the Appointing Authority for Old Colony Regional District School Committee.
A second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Excellent. Okay. Katie, you should be able to have a break now, unless there's something that you voluntarily want to share with us. Thank you for your help with that. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the EAPC, and I believe Tom is here. Hi, Tom.
I am here. I am here.
How are you?
I'm great. I can't believe we're already back at the table. Next year, where did time go?
It's that time already.
Yep.
I know, right? Ron, congratulations. Quite an award. Want to throw it out there? It would seem as my comments from the EAPC were planned around this, but it was not. So I personally, I do want to thank Ron and Scott both. I think we've had some really open, honest conversations about health insurance, and I think they've been good conversations about like the process and moving forward, and I do just appreciate the openness of them. I do look forward to continuing the conversations with them, but not only them, but with the other unions in town. We have our new town administrator. I will hope, you know, obviously, they'll get involved as we continue to work on establishing an insurance advisory committee meeting and hope everybody has a great Memorial Day. Hope we have great weather. That's the comments from the EAPC. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tom. I know, how are we almost at Memorial Day already? I don't know, just imagine how that's possible. Anyway, side note. Okay, so that brings us to comments from the general public. So I'm not sure if we have anyone attending on Zoom, but if there's anyone on Zoom that would like to be recognized to speak, if you could please enter your name in the chat to be recognized. If there's anyone here in the room that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to come up to the table and share whatever you'd like to share with us. Okay, there's no movement in the room. I don't see anyone.
No one's put their name into the chat.
Okay, so then we will move on to the approval of minutes from the April 29th, 2024 Open Session. Okay, I move that we approve the April 29th, 2024 Open Session Minutes.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Again, roll call vote. Oh, sorry, Katie.
That's okay. Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly, aye. Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, steins.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, everyone. So that brings us to Communications. Very exciting communication. I love that.
Yes. Hold on a second.
It's an update on our culinary classroom renovation.
Yes, I'm just trying to... It's not letting me share for some reason, for those at home.
Good luck, Steve.
So I'll hold on that, because I don't necessarily need to share that document. But I'll try one more time. I'm not sure why I can't. I was able to share at the beginning of the meeting, but right now, it's not letting me share.
Good luck, Steve.
So people at home will not be able to see my screen.
Okay.
So in the room, though, I can pull it up in the room.
Oh, I just got an internet unstable message. Anyone else?
So I can't... People in the room can see it. So we're excited. We're going to do an open house for our culinary classroom, which has been finished through the Opera funding. So we're inviting the members of the school committee, the members of the select board, town department heads, to join us between 11:30 and 1:00 PM on Wednesday, June 5th, for a personal tour of the newly completed space. Light refreshments will be available. If you could just let Gina know by next Friday, if you're able to attend, that would be greatly appreciated. And we're looking forward to christening the new culinary space with a small public event. And you obviously thought of eight cents to invite the select board, who approved the project through Opera, and all of the members of the town department heads who've been very supportive of the project.
Excellent. Very much looking forward to that. Thank you very much. I saw Chef today. He was smiling. I'm like, how is it? He just smiled. It was great to see. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
So personnel updates first. So since our last meeting, we have had one new hire, Carolyn Towner, as an ESP in Special Education at the Middle High School. And we've had a couple resignations. John Gagnon as a custodian at the elementary school. Christine Riley is a TVI special ed teacher at the Middle High School, effective end of the school year. Alexis Falco, teacher, Special Education at the Middle High School, effective end of the school year. And Shannon Alzheimer, an ESP in kindergarten at the elementary school, again, effective on the last day of school.
Okay, thank you for the update. That brings us to the update from the Student Advisory Council.
Hi, everyone. So first off, since this is my last meeting with you,
Um, hi, everyone. Um, so first off, since this is my last meeting with you, I just wanted to say what an honor it's been to work with all of you. Getting to come here and being involved in important discussions and generally learn the inner workings of a school committee has been such a rewarding and exciting experience for me. Between attending these meetings and serving on S R S A C, I can without a doubt say that this experience has instilled in me leadership, teamwork, and speaking skills that I will continue to use well into the future. Now I'm going to speak about some senior events, as today was our last day, and we did a lot of things to celebrate that were very cool. Um, so we started off with doing a walkthrough through the elementary school, where they were all waiting for us with adorable little coloring sheets that said like, congratulations. Um, we then went back to the school and got yearbooks, which we all signed, and then we went to the annual senior cookout, and Mr. McGuinness and Mr. Antell, um, cooked us up some great burgers and wore some very funny fish hats that the students appreciated. We then finished off the day with a car parade around the parking lot to say goodbye to all of our underclassmen, fellow students. Um, it was a very emotional experience, but I can say for certain that my classmates and I, we are all excited to start the next chapter of our lives. As for upcoming things, we have class day, convocation, and then graduation next week, which I know we would all appreciate if you have time to stop by to any of those. And, um, just once again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I really hope that this program continues and grows stronger in the years, because I think that this is a really great connection between the school committee and the students.
Thank you, Corinne. I'd like to take a moment, Corinne, just to thank you. I think you've done an outstanding job in the role. Uh, you've been eloquent, uh, in, in your support of, um, they obviously, first of all, just telling us what's happening in the school, but there's been a couple issues that have come up there. You've taken a strong and, and again, I think elegant's the word, um, and stance, uh, and really, really represented yourself well and represented the Student Advisory Council really well. Um, and it's just been truly impressive, and it's been an honor to have you there. And hopefully someone will have someone as strong to fill the role in the future. So, thank you for the time. Because I know it's a, it's a lot of dedication of time, and I certainly appreciate that, and I think the entire committee appreciates that. So thank you for your time, your effort, and your energy. It was greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Katie, do you want to add anything?
I agree wholeheartedly with Scott. Also, I think there were some things that Corinne and I really agreed on, and I felt like, um, we worked really well together to get that point across on certain, um, topics, and I was extremely impressed with her poise and self-awareness at her age, and I am so excited to hear about her adventures next year, and I will definitely be following you, so. Uh, good luck.
Thank you.
Proud of you.
Great, thank you. I asked Katie to speak because she's been, um, the school clear rep that's been working with, um, Student Advisory Council, um, this year, so. Um, thank you, Corinne, for being here. Thank you for, um, using your voice to advocate. Um, it's been, I think everyone would say, it's been great. It's great to have student voice. I'm looking forward to, um, continuing that, so thank you for all the time you put in. We appreciate it. Okay, so that brings us to middle high school attendance updates.
Yeah, so we're pleased to have, uh, Mr. Antell and Mr. McGuinness here.
No fish hats for us.
No fish, no fish hats. And I'm going to try one more time to share the, um, share the agenda with the public, but I don't seem to be able to do that. Uh, everybody can see on my screen here, the little share is grayed out. I'm not sure why I'm not allowed to share at this moment, uh, but I, when I was earlier in the meeting. But we'll be able to share in the, you know, so we're happy to have them here. You know, at both buildings, we've been doing a lot of work on the issue of attendance. So we spoke earlier in the year, specifically when we looked at some of our M C A S scores. We talked about chronic absenteeism and how high chronic absenteeism was across the district. And it was really, I think, um, surprising to members of the committee, surprising to members of the community, how frequently students were absent. You know, so as part of our goals this year as a school district, in both buildings, both of the Middle High School and the Elementary School, we've put some real focus on, um, supporting students in attending school. So Mr. McGuinness and Mr. Antell are here this evening to represent, uh, the Middle High School and the work they've done, and also share their handbook. And then, uh, the elementary school, uh, Dr. Pennella, uh, and Dr. Stahl will share, uh, the work they've done with attendance and their, and their handbook in June. You know, but just to, to frame the discussion, you know, if we remember back from the fall, you know, our chronic absenteeism for district, the district number was a little over nineteen percent. You know, so nineteen percent of our students, district-wide, missed more than eighteen school days, more than ten percent of the school year last year. Uh, but that's a, that's a really high number. You know, the average student in the district last year missed eleven point six days of school. That was the student average. You know, so those numbers were certainly concerning. Uh, so we've, this, as I said, there's been a real focus district-wide on trying to improve student attendance, and we're welcome to have Mr. McGuinness and Mr. Antell here to talk about what's been happening at the Middle High School around attendance.
So first, thank you very much for having Mr. Antell and myself here. We kind of want to just go over at a high level what we've put in place from an attendance process, and we look at data in a multi-faceted way that we're looking at it. We were not just looking at it in regards to attendance, we're looking at it in regards to test scores, community engagement, student engagement within our classrooms and everything. Um, the first thing that we did is we put together an attendance committee, and on the next slide you'll see, um, our attendance committee. It was fantastic to work with Mr. Antell on this, but we worked with Trish Winslow, Sean Vance, Chrissy McKenna, Christina Nolan, Karen Schoen, Michelle Nickerson, and Ashley Doyle, um, Doyle, sorry. We worked every other week we met, and we talked data. We talked about the students too. It wasn't just data-driven. We talked about the individual students. And on the next slide, we kind of wanted to set goals for ourselves. So we wanted to review attendance data, and how is that affecting our test scores? How is that affecting our students and our families? Create action plans to address students that the team was concerned about due to attendance data. When you look at this team, we didn't want to just say, here's the data, here's going to be the reaction. We looked at each student individually, and how could we support that student and the family? We reviewed the processes and how to improve individual and group attendance in order to decrease overall attendance, absences, and tardies. Because when we look at this, it's not just about the absences. We're looking at a tardies issue too, because if the students are coming in a little bit later and later each day, they're missing classes. And now our teachers are kind of going back over and double-checking things with the students, and we don't get to have that really good, strong progress towards our goal. We created updates to be presented to the Handbook Committee for possible additions to the twenty-four, twenty-five student handbook, which is a combined handbook that we're going to present to you later. Mr. Antell will be leading that discussion, and review the correlation of attendance to improve academic success. That is one of our biggest drivers. We want to be able to say, let's look at our data, let's make sure we, we worked with, um, Dr. Erickson to make sure, and Mr. Antell, when we're looking at M C A S scores and all the test scores that we have, how could we correlate what our attendance numbers look like? So let's take some action steps. Uh, we did review the attendance data. We created action plans, and we wanted to create a process to send communications home to students trending towards chronically absent. We don't want to be reactive. We want to be proactive. And each month that we met, we set our bogey. I used as an eight percent target. If you're absent eight percent of the time, we considered you on track for chronically absent. We reached out to the families. We started those discussions about how could we support you? Did you know that this is something that correlates with academic success and student success overall? So we went and we sent bi-weekly letters. Other things we did, the office that met with students that reached four tardies. I say that because it was a really good team effort between Ms. Doyle, Ms. Nickerson, Mr. Antell, and myself, because when students start to reach four, and we tried to do it at three, couldn't always guarantee a three, but when we reached four, we say, that next time, you're going to get a detention. That's what the handbook states. But also, what's causing us to be late? Let's have a conversation, not just, you've got four, you've got five, you've got a detention. Let's have a conversation as to why, and how's this affecting your classwork? We want to remind them of the five, ten, fifteen rule. At five, you get a detention. Now I'm going to go high school, for a middle high school, separate. At the high school, at five, ten, and fifteen, five, you get a detention, ten, you get a Saturday school, and fifteen, you get social probation, which then removes you from any type of co-curricular activities. These are unexcused tardies. Let's make sure there's a difference. There, if a doctor's appointment, a court-ordered appointment, or something, that's not considered unexcused. We work with those. We, we understand those happen. These are the unexcused, and especially when they come walking in holding their Dunkin' Donuts cup. We really had that discussion with them. We also had, not only did we do after-school detentions, we tried to think out of the box with busing issues and everything. I started to host a before-school detention. So we would come in around quarter seven, and we would allow the students to come in a little bit earlier. And they thought that was great. In my eyes, that's even better. I got them to school on time, at least for that day. And said, now, listen, you could stay twenty minutes later and still be on time the next time. So it was a conversation. We had sixteen Saturday schools this year due to excessive tardies. So there was sixteen Saturday schools issued because of ten or more, um, tardies. I will tell you, the rule for missing a Saturday school would have been a in-school suspension. We did not get to that point for anybody. We were, not only were we saying you had to be there, but Mr. Antell and I, we also wanted to work with them. Listen, if you can't get out of work, you can't get your shift covered on Starbucks. Let's push it off to next week, but we're only going to go so far, and let's work and be collaborative. We sent home letters for any students with excessive tardies. So families were understanding. We didn't just send the electronic version. We sent, we sent to them a hard copy plus an electronic version. Reviewed students in jeopardy of losing credits due to excessive tardies or missed classes. We worked very closely with the Guidance Department, and they ran a lot of great reports for us, and we were able to have discussions. Um, when you have a semester class, it's two terms, anything over eight absences, okay, eight absences, and remember, if you're tardy for more than fifteen minutes of a class, it's an absence. Unexcused absences, you actually lose credit for that class. Now, we have a credit buyback program that we work with them, but we don't want to get to that point, because we're missing a lot of things before we get to that. For a full-year class, it's sixteen. So we try to avoid that. We did have some students in a buyback program, um, and Guidance led the process to work with the students and family and students in jeopardy of losing credits. So it wasn't a surprise. We were always in communication. We were sitting down and working with somebody. A credit buyback program, just so that way we all understand, you have to be on time in all of your classes, five straight days, no write-ups, no anything, and that gets you a day back. So it, it's work to get it back. It's not just given, but it was great to see everybody working.
Before Sean, you jumped to the next slide, we went over the five, ten, fifteen rule for high school. This year for middle school, every five unexcused tardies was an office detention. We get that high school and middle school kids are different. We get middle school kids aren't driving themselves. There's extenuating factors there, uh, which is why this year the rule, uh, they're different from one another.
And, and that will stay different as we progress, um, when you'll see the handbook a little bit later. We didn't look for changes there. Um, we, we're not going to get a Saturday school for somebody in middle school for this. We want to work with them. Um, just now, now we're going to start to get into some data sets. Um, I want to, if, on this one, we added high school students to our child requiring assistance. That's a C R A filing process, policy with our attendance officer. Okay, that's Mrs. Winslow, our Guidance Chair. She works very closely with the court and the truancy officer. And the reason why that was a little bit different in the past is we focused in on middle school students for this, when they have excessive, um, absences. We can actually go up to the age of sixteen, which really incorporated a lot of our freshmen. We don't want to lose that time. This is not a weapon. This is not a deterrent. This is something, how can we get even more support now for a student? A C R A isn't supposed to look at something as negatively. It's, let's, listen, we've got to get more supports to get you to school. We've got to work on your education. We had three high school CRAs filed this year. We had four middle school CRAs filed this year. And a lot of those turned into successes. I know that we were talking about one student on the high school level that since his C R A was filed, I think he's only missed one day. So it's really worked as a benefit for that. We created the guidelines for the school spring that was supported by DESI. DESI put something out to all the schools across the state. Mr. Neef came to us and the elementary schools.
Just, we did talk about that earlier in the year. DESI put out, actually gave every school district ten thousand dollars to run uh, some sort of program, uh, to encourage students to attend. It just had to be school sessions that occurred either over the vacations. It could have been the holiday break, February, April. It could have been Saturdays. Uh, it couldn't, it wasn't supposed to be after school. It had to be, it could be in the evening if it was four consecutive hours. Those were the guidelines for how we could spend the money. Uh, and so at both buildings, we ran a, a program.
And so e- every building was run a little bit differently. How we ran that program based on our committee's feedback is we ran it over April vacation. That's why we called it Spring School. Um, it was Tuesday through Friday. It was project-based initiatives, so it wasn't just show up, here you are. Each classroom did project-based initiatives led by teachers that were all very anxious to come and work with our students during that time. We heard from Mr. Neef about some data that said where our numbers are projecting this year. What will happen is the state will go in and do a data scrub, and we had eleven high school students and eight middle school students attend this. Part of the process is that will actually give them days back on their attendance, and that will actually lower that number even more now. So we're trending towards the right direction. Uh, we reviewed the discipline referrals and the correlation to attendance numbers and test scores. So Mr. Antell and I took all of our data from last year for discipline and reviewed it this year, and we go month by month by month, and we review it with our committee, and it also allows us to see where we're trending in our classrooms, hallways, and athletic fields, co-curriculars everywhere, where, where are we seeing our write-ups and how can we help support and address that? Now we'll look at just straight data. This is straightforward. This is a three-year trend. Unexcused tardies. We went from last year, we'll just look at last year, we had thirteen hundred and fifty-six unexcused tardies at the middle school. This year we're down to twelve oh seven. Last year we had forty-one hundred and fifty-three unexcused tardies at the high school. We were down to twenty-seven sixty-two. Overall, we've seen a decrease of just about nine hundred tardies. There's a lot. There's all of this. There's the small things of us out there greeting the kids every day, joking around with them, come on, you gotta, let's hustle, let's hustle, as we're moving them to get them into class. And it's worked. We've gone from an average of seven point three six tardies per student down to five point five nine. Our goal is to be below six. We're there. That doesn't mean we're there for the end of the year. We want to keep working. Um, here's, here's something that's, that's interesting that we're seeing. These are dismissals. This has been something that you'll see from, oh, twenty-one to twenty-two actually increased. And now what's happening is we're seeing more and more students just get dismissed in the afternoon, without doctor's notes, without appointments, just getting dismissed. Um, this year, the middle school has increased by one hundred, and the high school has decreased by a little bit more than about the same. So it's really a wash. But when you look at our percentages, you'll see the percentages have actually gone up, even though our number has gone down. It's because we had less students, so the average per student is going up. But we found a way to address that while still being fair and consistent with saying, no, an excused dismissal should be taken care of. If that was the only doctor's appointment, that was the only dentist appointment, that was the only time that the courts could see you. That's where we address it, and you'll see that in Mr. Antell's presentation. But what we want to try to cut to is sometimes when you see the driver's head car pull up, and we're missing an English class for driving hours. We're, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to take care of that, and it's not because we're trying to get control, it's because we want kids in the classroom. If we look at the next page, we look at our excused absences. Um, excused absences has continually decreased. Um, the upper left-hand corner shows you, we went from thirty-two seventy-five down to twenty-six sixteen, down to fifteen eighty. And I'm actually happy because the fear for somebody like me presenting data is our unexcused numbers went up, but they didn't. They still went down as well. So that shows that we're focusing in. We at the middle school, they've decreased by just about two hundred from last year, and at the high school, we've decreased by just about four hundred unexcused absences. So overall, it's a drop of five hundred, and we've gotten that number below eight for the first time in the three years. So we're going to continue focusing on that. That's continuing to work with families about getting doctor's notes. This isn't about a gotcha moment. Okay, you were out, here's the thing. No, we want it, is it should be excused. How do we get you there? How do we get you, you makeup work, stuff like that? Overall, the total attendance, if you look, we've seen a sharp decrease. In twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, there was ten thousand one hundred ninety-one absences at the high school. Last year, there was eighty-six, eighty-seven, and this year we're down to seventy-one fifteen. These are all in the chronological timed order, so when we pull a report, we pull the report from May twentieth. We pull a report from May twentieth each year and how it's set. So there might be some little changes in the data if aspirin was scrubbed in the last couple of years, but this gives us a really good gauge, and our goal is to get that to nine and a half. The ten, it's going to be a struggle over the last month, but I can tell you, we had a instance where I think we were minus a couple of seniors uh, last week. That's why that number might have gone up, and we looked in projections of last year, that came later in the year, so I think we're going to be able to make up some, some data there. And on the next screen.
I'm just going to hold here for a second. So just last Friday, uh, the state released, uh, its attendance data, uh, based on the March first, what's called SIM submission. Uh, so as of March first, this is when they had the district. So this is district data, not Carver Mill High School data, but it supports the same trend that our overall attendance is improving. So as of March first, and the way the state approaches this data is similar to what Mr. McGuinness just said, is that it looks at the number of school days you had as of March first, and then uses chronically absent as ten percent of that number of school days. So as of March first, this is the percentage that missed ten percent. Um, so our chronically absent for the district was fourteen point three percent. In comparison to last year, it was nineteen percent. Uh, our overall attendance rate was ninety-four percent in attendance as compared to a little over ninety-two last year. Uh, and then our absences per student were district-wide six point six, which is lower than here, but the elementary school is going to be a little bit better. It's going to help in that data. As compared to, as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, it was eleven point six average, was our average absences per student. So at least as of March first, the state data confirms and supports, uh, the same message that Mr. Antell and Mr. McGuinness are sharing, that it was certainly our attendance data is trending in the right direction, and I think it's trending in the right direction because, um, the effort and the focus that we've, we've put onto it. And certainly, um, the other point I do want to make is this data is still not good. You know, so if we go back to pre-COVID times, and we look at our numbers for pre-COVID times, they were a lot better than this. But we, so we have to just keep pushing in that direction, uh, and try to get that data back to where it was prior to two thousand and twenty. Sorry.
No, that's great. And the, the last screenshot is, gives a kind of an overall data, and this actually allows us to grab the academic data from Dr. Erickson and Mr. Antell through all the testing scores, and now we can actually get a little bit of a focus. But if we look at our chronically absent, we looked at twelve or more right now. Now sixteen is the state, that's less than a month away. Our number's going to be more aggressive. We have a total of a hundred and ninety-one people make up thirty-eight hundred and thirteen days. So that's a group that we're going to continue to focus on. How do we support them? How do we get them to school? How do we get them into the classroom and the classroom support? Chronically tardiness, which is fifteen plus, these are unexcused tardies again. Unexcused, I want to make sure that we understand that. We have eighty people that take up fifty-four percent of our tardies. They have two thousand and thirty-three for those eighty people. So again, it's about support. It's about coming up with that plan that we talk about. I would like to point out one thing, the chronic dismissals, you'll notice there's a different date there, May tenth. Um, that report pulled on one major report, but the individual report that I tried to get, I pulled too late for this meeting, so I apologize. So I used the May tenth data. We had a hundred and sixty-two people be dismissed for We had 162 people be dismissed for 848 days and that totals for 37 and a half of our dismissals. And you can see, it's actually, we, I break everything down by high school, middle school. So that way it helps our team be able to decipher how are we going to react? How are we going to change to this? So as Mr. Neef said, this is some start, this is a start. We're just starting up the mountain and we're getting some progress, but how do we keep that progress going? And on the next page, we talk about our next steps. Our, our team feels very strongly about putting dismissal policy into place in the handbook for the 24, 25 year that addresses unexcused dismissals. Unexcused dismissals. For our student athletes and performing arts students, they already have a process in place and that's where if they leave during the day and they don't get a doctor's note or weren't going to court, they can't return to participate in any type of activities. We're trying to make that fair and consistent across the board and try to make sure that students are coming in with doctor's notes and we're getting dismissed for the right reasons and, and go from there. We want to continue to have high school students under the age of 16 added to the CRA filing policy and attendance officers review. Review of the 23, 24 MCAS and all academic results of chronically, chronically absent students to help build a plan for 24, 25. Where do we have to strengthen our supports for them? Where are we driving it to? Mr. Antel has come up with a good idea and I'm glad he's going to be the voice of this. He's going to put into place a robocall for chronically absent tardy students when possible to try to work with them. He'll obviously gain the support of the families before just doing something like that and talk to kids. They have tried something like this in the past, but we have looked into the system. It's been successful in the past. We have the tools to do it. So that's something we want to add to our repertoire for next year.
I don't know who wouldn't want to hear from me at 6:00 every morning, so might as well give it a chance.
And then we want to create a plan to meet with parents. And this is, this is not about a meeting of your side, our side. This is a collaboration meeting. How do we get your students in school? How do we make sure that we reduce those numbers and how do we support them academically? We are, we're able to target our individuals that we want to help, that are asking for our support in different ways. And our committee has felt as though the work here is trending in that right direction. That's kind of the work that we've done this year. Again, we view this as a start. We know we have a lot of work to do. Our team has been great and we look forward to any feedback or guidance that you'd like to present to us.
One of the things I think that would be really helpful in this is to explain all of this to parents. Because I don't think, I'm just sitting here thinking about my own child and I realize I don't think I submitted a couple of notes that I got from her doctor saying that she was sick. And I think if we really spell this out for both the elementary school and the middle high school, that that might be very helpful. Because I mean, we're all busy, we're all running around and you know, sometimes not everybody's going into my chart and checking that the letter is there and sending it off to the nurse to do that. So if we really spelled this out at the beginning of the year, maybe even shared a watered-down version of this presentation with parents, just, you know, it said robocall, just email it out. I think it would be extremely helpful so that parents understand what's excused, what's not excused. Because to be honest with you, just until now, I mean, I knew some of the stuff, but not all of it. Actually, it would be helpful.
I do want to clarify that from DESI's perspective, there is no such thing as an excused absence.
Well, right.
So their, their DESI just looks at, are you in school or you're not? And their, and their chronic absenteeism number, which I think is legitimate of 18 school days, they're saying, whether you're excused or not, you shouldn't have missed more than 18 school days. So, but I just wanted to make that clarification from a DESI perspective in terms of those numbers. But certainly at the middle high school especially, it makes a difference in terms of earning credit for your classes and those types of things. And then also that discern determination if you're going to file a CRA, get a letter at home, all those types of things.
And when we talk about, sorry, when we talk about CRA, there is a process. So it's not, I just want to make sure everybody is aware and if we need to get to that process, we can. It's, we don't just say, this is a person we're going to file a CRA on. We have to meet each criteria. And Trish Winslow, our guidance chair, is the one that makes sure that we are meeting that and goes to court for us.
So forgive me for being unaware, but when they report things to the middle high school, like if a parent is dismissing for a dentist appointment per se, how do they do that? I know for us, for the elementary school, we use the pickup patrol.
Yep.
And I usually go in and say, okay, she has a doctor's appointment. But I don't think every parent would know to do that. They probably just say, I'm dismissing my kid 11 minutes and they don't ever explain to you why.
So I think that's a good point, but what we do is, our district uses the pickup patrol across the board.
Okay.
We are consistent with that tool. When somebody comes in, Ms. Nickerson, who is fantastic at the front door, Ms. Doyle, we love them both. Their first, first thing they say is, did you put your child into pickup patrol? Did you make sure you did that? And that is our goal, is to make sure everybody's in pickup patrol for that fair and consistent. Do we have some times where somebody's like, I just need my child? I, we're not going to hold somebody's child in school without that.
Of course.
But I followed up and say, hey, could you do me a favor? I know it's two hours later, could you just go and put it in for us? Because we want to make sure we have the tracking, we want to make sure all liability is covered for us. And then again, as we get going, these letters are not saying, this is not like a demand letter from a lawyer or something. This is a letter saying, here's your absences. Call us, we'll work with you as far as what's missing. We've worked with so many parents, here's all the dates. Some parents are shocked at the dates. Some parents are like, oh yeah, that's right, they were out sick, I can get you that doctor's note.
So I'm having that same, I looked at my daughters yesterday and went, huh, that seems a little off. I think I forgot to submit a few things. My other question is, in terms, and this could be for anybody, in terms of pickup patrol, I think one of the things that people find difficult is that it's not an app and you have to log in online in order to, to do that. And I've had several parents, just friends, you know, families and, you know, we were in communication with who had mentioned, hey, where do I have to go to do that again? Why do I have to go into the web to do that again? You know, I hate to say this, everybody's looking for convenience and that, are we, is that something that they're looking into? Have we looked into it? Is it something that school status could do? I don't know, but maybe simplifying or explaining the process.
At the middle high school, in addition to pickup patrol, we have an MHS, specifically Carver.org email.
Okay.
Which does, is, might be a little bit simple for some.
For what? Pickup patrol. You do?
So Ruby, I don't know if you want to comment answer, I was going to say, Ruby might, Ruby might be the person most qualified to answer this question. Or maybe Naomi or Jess.
Oh no.
So pickup patrol is web-based.
Yes.
But everybody has to have an account. Every single family member, no matter how you, how your child goes home. And again, it's only for dismissals. And while it is web-based, there is a feature that you can put it on, put like a little logo, the logo on your smartphone, which is probably what you have.
Yeah.
That's what you have.
It's called pinning.
Exactly. And then you can easily go in, you can have your username and.
Can we pass them on that?
And then it, and then you can just click on it just like you would an app and it acts like an app.
Yeah, that's fine. If we could do some sort of communication around that to parents, maybe at the beginning and next year, I think that would be extremely helpful.
And that's something we talk about, pinning is something that we talk about at the high school with apps. So that's something that we can put out at the beginning of the year.
That would be fantastic.
Anything that's helpful to lower these numbers.
I agree.
We're in. Especially something simple like that.
I think just a little explanation with the parents would go a long, long way. Absolutely.
And so when we meet with all of the, every single family when they register, we go through pickup patrol and all of the features and new families also. So we've been doing that for the last several years.
My kids went through COVID.
It doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt to remind.
I think that might be part of the issue too, is that a lot of these kids coming through now were the COVID kids. So we didn't have in-person anything, like I registered her, she was in school for six months and then she was out of school for the rest of the school year, started with that March. So yeah, I think just a little explanation might be helpful.
Yep.
Very easy.
Easy. And I think it might be a helpful, easy fix for you too. Thank you, Ruby.
Awesome.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that, just a reminder to the community and to the members of the committee, that this issue of chronic absenteeism isn't just a Carver issue. And so looking at that March 1st SIMS data, right now the state is projecting that the statewide chronic absenteeism rate is going to be 19.6% as of March 1st. Carver was 14.3, so we're in a better position. The overall attendance rate statewide was 93%. We were 94. I know I've already said some of these numbers. And the absences per student statewide was, interestingly enough, was six absences per student compared to ours was 6.6. So we actually have some more students who are absent, but not meeting the, not meeting the threshold of chronically absent. They actually published a new number this year, which is those students who are, I don't know, they're not calling it anything, I'll call it doubly chronically absent, that they've missed more than 20% of the school year this year as of March 1st. Carver's number was 2.7%. The statewide number was 5.4%. So we're, right now we're actually performing better than the state. And the state, that's why they created this attendance academy, because they realized this was a statewide issue in terms of students attending school. So I just wanted to remind the community that this isn't a Carver issue alone, it's something that we're battling across the state.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I think it's nationwide also.
Yeah, I'm sure it's nationwide. Anything else from Mr. Antel and Mr. McGinnis at this time?
No.
Is there any indication as to whether or not this funding will be available again for next year?
They haven't mentioned it all yet.
Well, thank you for your efforts. Thank you to the team.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We know that it can be challenging to get kids to school and on time and all those things. So thank you for the effort that you're putting in. Sure, if you wore those fish hats when you're having, you know, those detentions.
Next time we'll have to wear them.
All right, we'll see you later.
Thank you so much. Okay, so does that take us to Day on the Hill, Ruby?
It takes us to Day on the Hill.
Day on the Hill.
So on Monday, May 6th, Stephanie, Katie and I attended the MAS C Day on the Hill. Stephanie and Katie did have the opportunity to meet with an aide from Senator Pacheco's office. You know, for the members of, for the members, I've linked the, all the MAS C public policy priorities in the background. I have it up on the screen here. My intention is to not go through these three pages of priorities.
Oh, come on Scott.
But I did, I just, I did look at them and felt I would mention a couple that I thought were particularly pertinent for the County Public Schools. And certainly Katie and Stephanie, you could certainly add on or jump in with anything that you'd like to add. So the first one was, this first one on the list here, full funding of the Student Opportunity Act and evaluating the Chapter 70 formula. And MAS C, sorry, MAS C is calling attention to two structural issues with the current Chapter 70 formula. First is the calculation of inflation. So obviously inflation's been a huge discussion across the country over the last couple of years. And they're saying that Chapter 70, Chapter 70 is not growing at the rate equal to inflation. And there's actually a cap that's established by the state law on how much the inflation rate can increase. So certainly inflation across Massachusetts, which at times was as high as 9 or 11% over the last couple of years, is outgrowing what the cap is. I'm not going to put Ron on, on pressure of what the cap is, 4, 4 and a half percent. So right now, the law is saying the chap, the most Chapter 70 can grow, the factor that's put in for inflation, the max is 4 and a half percent. And they actually, the legislature actually gets to decide how they can go up to 4 and a half percent. They could, you know, in a year that inflation's 3%, they don't do 4 and a half percent, they'll do a lower number. But the max is 4 and a half. And certainly inflation over the last couple of years has been beyond 4 and a half percent. So there's this statement of, that formula needs to be looked at, that piece of the Chapter 70 formula needs to be looked at so that we can more closely align with what real inflation is in terms of having that growth. So that's the one structure that they're calling into. The second structure that they're saying we need to look at is this whole concept of there's, there's been a change in how they determine economically disadvantaged students based on Medicare. So a student is identified as economically disadvantaged through the Medicare program, through Medicare systems. And that's actually reduced the number of students that actually have the eligibility of being economically disadvantaged. And that's a factor in the SLA formula. So you get additional Chapter 70 monies for students who are identified as economically disadvantaged. And across the state, based on some federal guidelines, the number or percentage of students identified as economically disadvantaged has decreased. And Carver actually has been, that's been a factor for us. If you compare our identified economically disadvantaged this year to last year, it's actually gone down a little bit. And I think Ron talked about that a little bit when we were looking at Chapter 70, when we were going through the budget process. So MAS C is saying, let's really look at these two issues that are impacting the ability for Chapter 78 to grow, which is state aids which supports our schools. So we would be supportive of that. Those are both things that would have an impact for Carver. So if the inflation rate increased and they changed the factors in how they determine economically disadvantaged students, both of those would be positive impacts for Carver, which would increase our state aid and our state funding for education. So we would be supportive of the same concepts that MAS C is looking at in terms of the funding of Chapter 70. Second one is fully funding for special education circuit breaker. We've talked a lot about circuit breakers this year during our budget presentations. MAS C is advocating for a 90% reimbursement rate. I won't put anybody on the spot to ask what the current reimbursement rate is, but we've said it many times over the years, but it's 75%. And I saw some people say, I know some members of the committee said they had that 75% on the tip of their tongue of what the reimbursement rate is for a circuit breaker. And actually, that's been a positive change in the last few years. The state has continually funded 75%. For many years, they were, they weren't even funding it 75%. It was subject to annual appropriations. In some years, they'd give 65% or 60%. They've been very consistent in doing the 75% the last couple of years. But MAS C is asking for a higher threshold that would reimburse 90% for those extraordinary special education costs, which certainly impacted the County Public Schools this year. The other thing they're looking for, and we did talk about this when we went through the budget process, was reducing the threshold of where a circuit breaker kicks in. So if remember, there's a specific number, it's a little over $52,000. So the first $52,000 of an added district special ed cost, the County Public Schools has to take on that entire cost. And then any amount above that number is where the 75% reimbursement comes in. You know, so a student that has, let's say a $100,000 added district cost, the first 52 would change, we would have to pay, then, we would have to pay the $100,000. $48,000 of it would be reimbursed one year behind at a rate of 75%. They're saying, let's reduce the threshold from $52,000, reduce it by 25%. So if you reduce that threshold by 25%, this, my math isn't going to be great on this, it's be around $40,000, $39,000 and make that the new threshold, now we're going to get increased reimbursement and increased support for special education costs, which are really escalating. So certainly this would be a huge impact for the County Public Schools if MAS C was either able to get either of those, either one of those two things flew, either a 90% reimbursement rate or reducing the threshold by 25%. Either one of those would certainly be beneficial for us. Both of them would be amazing. So I figured we'd say, yes, we support both of those things strongly in the County Public Schools. The next one I selected was the Child Services Safety Net. MAS C is advocating for increased funding for state agencies outside of education that support students. funding for state agencies outside of education that support students. You know, students, schools alone cannot compensate for the threats of hunger, healthcare, mental health services. This includes, this advocacy includes the funding of free breakfast and lunch for all students. So I know, if you remember from last year, that's been passed, but that is also subject to annual appropriations. So on a yearly basis, the legislature has to say, yes, we're going to continue to support free lunch and free breakfast for students. You know, they have done that this year, but in three years or five years, they could make a decision not to. So there's an advocacy along the lines of, let's just make that permanent, that we're going to support free lunch and free breakfast for students. And then obviously, it's saying, you know, ultimately, there are many services that school-aged students need that the school doesn't provide, but let's make sure we're providing those supports through other agencies. And that would clearly be a benefit for us as well. The third one, the fourth one I selected was rethinking the state accountability system. Is on here, is the list in terms of, I'm going to see if I can match up here. There you go, rethinking the state accountability system. MAS-C is advocating for looking at MCAS testing with the possibility of consideration for eliminating the MCAS graduation requirement, and just limiting the test for the use of diagnostic and professional practices to improve student performance. You know, educators look at the data, say, what can we do to support students to have them grow and to continue to learn, but take out that high-stakes component. So that is something that MAS-C is advocating for. And then the last one I mentioned is, because it's becoming a little bit of an issue, is establishing incentives for more students to become educators. What we've seen the last year or two is the pool of those people interested in becoming educators is thinning. And one of the, one of the most striking parts for the whole day for me was the state legislators who were in attendance, they stood up and said, we've been talking to the colleges and the college programs, and they're all under-enrolled. So right now, the number of students interested at the college level in being teachers or ESPs is lower than it's been in decades. So there's a real concern that in five or 10 or 15 years, we're going to have, not going to have enough educators. So if you're out there and you're interested in becoming an educator, it's a good field to move into because there's going to be positions available for you in five or 10 years. Corinne, not the other, I know you have other, I know you have some other ambitions beyond maybe being a high school teacher or an elementary teacher, other areas of interest. But, you know, ultimately, this MAS-C is saying, let's see if we can put some programs in place that might incentivize people to want to become teachers. Things they're talking about, loan forgiveness, state subsidized wages, signing bonuses, you know, some low-level incentives that would encourage people to join the teaching profession and that may do some legislature, legislation around that. So I think that that, that would certainly benefit us. And we've seen it. Our, our pool, our pools for all of our positions are thinner, and it's across the board. You know, so as an example, we recently had an application for a kindergarten teacher. In the late, you know, 2017, 2018, an application, if we had a job for a kindergarten teacher, there's a good chance we'd have over 200 applicants, maybe even 300. This last round, we had...
About 80, maybe 80.
Eighty. In the end, we had about 80 applicants, which is still a lot. So there were 80 people certified, qualified, and interested in being a kindergarten teacher for us. But that, five years ago, that was 250 people. And we've seen a similar decrease for all the positions. So the position that didn't have 250 people, that had 20 or 30 people applying, now has 10, or eight, or six. And the particularly challenging areas have become, special education teachers is becoming a challenging area to hire. Foreign language teachers, specifically French and Spanish, have become particularly challenging to hire. That, that's where we've seen our greatest impact. And then things that have always historically been challenging, like physics or chemistry, or some of your advanced maths, those were challenging 10 years ago as well. But same concept, you know, we may have had eight or 10 people applying for those positions, now we have three or four or five. So we, we want to see, you know, what we can do to try to support interest in people becoming educators. And maybe that's something, you know, Ron and I've had some discussions about this in terms of, it hasn't gone much beyond that, but, you know, do we start looking at something at the high school level to be encouraging some of our high school students to move towards and participate in education beyond the internships that we do? You know, so do we, do we make something a little more concrete to offer students or incentivize them, or at least encourage them to show an interest in becoming a teacher later on in life? So those are the eye areas that I selected. You know, certainly Katie and Stephanie, if you wanted to talk about anything else, or talk about your experience on the day, Day on the Hill, that'd be great.
Yeah, I agree with all of those points. They would all be tremendous. It was very surprising to hear about the sharp decline in college students that are pursuing careers in education, even at administration level. It's, it's all across education. So it was good to hear that they were aware of it and committed to trying to come up with some solutions. They recognize the problem and they're putting things in motion, which I think is, is great. Because sometimes you recognize an issue and it's hard to get the legislature to actually, you know, start to put plans in place, or having conversations or forming committees. So it's encouraging to see that happening. One thing, one thing that I had learned about at a National School Board Association conference was educators rising. And I think that they, I believe, when I first found out about them, they did not have a chapter in New England, but I think that they just started one somewhere in Massachusetts. So that's something that, I mean, clearly, to find an advisor at the, at the middle high school to, to take that on. But that connects students that are interested in education with students from across the country and just gives them opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise have. So that could be something that perhaps we could pursue. It was a, it's always a great day. Hopefully, we tried briefly, hopefully next year, now that the culinary project is done, we're going to see if, potentially, if chef and his students might be interested in putting their names in. They always have an amazing lunch at the State House. There's 18 schools that come and provide lunch, and it's always amazing.
Culinary programs across the state, and we're advocating for chefs to be invited. Currently, they've only invited Chapter 74 culinary programs, but that, which our program is not a Chapter 74 vocational program technically. But we're going to advocate to have our students invited to that and, and come and so be part of the lunch.
Right, yeah. So if chef and his students are up for the challenge, then we're going to advocate on their behalf to get their name in the ring. It'd be a good opportunity for them to meet other kids from other programs from around the state also. So Katie, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I agree with everything that Scott said and you said. Just, you know, being where I come from, I work as an ESP, I'm in school to get my licensure to be a special ed teacher, and I'm on a school committee. So I feel like I'm coming at it all the ways. And it was, it was actually very encouraging to hear that they're looking at like alternates to MTELS and all of that to make a career choice in education a little bit easier to attain.
Right, yeah. Easier pathways to licensure and trying to find ways to diversify the workforce also. So it was great to be there. Hopefully, next year, we'll see what the timing is with next year. This year, it was tough, there were AP exams that week. So we didn't have any students accompany us this year, but hopefully we'll try it again for next year. So thank you for that succinct review of some of the MAS-C priorities. So next, that brings us to upcoming events.
So there's a lot happening in the County Public Schools in the next 18 days. There are 18 days of school left, but a lot of things are going to hap-
18 days?
18 days of school, 18 days of school left, but a lot of things are going to happen over those 18 days.
Almost.
Yeah, so I'll just bring the list up and show it to people. Again, sorry to those people at home that I'm currently not able to share. I guess I should try one more time.
Yeah, because I just see it pop up somewhere. Oh, that seems like a million years ago.
Let's see. All right, it might be back. Somehow I was unhosted. Maybe, maybe somehow I unmade myself the host.
Oh, maybe.
And now I'm back, now I'm back as the host. Sure, let's go. There we go, look at that.
Weird.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think I unmade myself the host.
I don't think it was you, actually.
But for those who are at home, they can see this list of great things coming up. You know, obviously, for the members of the school committee, Corinne mentioned, class day at 9:00 AM on the 29th convocation on the 30th at 6:00 PM, and then graduation on June 2nd at 10:00 AM, hopefully outside, hopefully the weather will be beautiful. And certainly, the members of the school committee are invited to attend all those events. But we have all kinds of end-of-the-year awards and banquets, and all of our concerts are coming up for both the high school chorus and band concerts, the middle school chorus and band concerts, the elementary chorus and band concerts. So I'll just let people, let the members of the school committee see these events. And they're certainly all out on the district calendar, and we encourage members of the community to come out. On our June 10th meeting, there will not be a list of upcoming events because there won't be a lot, there won't be, there won't be that much stuff happening after, after June 10th.
That is great. It's great to see so many good things happening, good things to look forward to. I hope people come up and fill up those seats and support, support our students. Okay, so that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent.
Okay, first is the middle and high school handbook. So we're going to welcome back Mr. Antell and Mr. McGinnis. So we're going to talk about the proposal to actually combine the middle and high school handbook next year into one document. Currently, there's a middle school handbook and a high school handbook, and they're going to take us through the changes.
Welcome back.
Thank you for having us back. So last year, I know that, as Mr. Neef just said, we promised this joint handbook. I'm sure everybody was really waiting to see what it looked like. So now we get to show it to you. So we have a PowerPoint again and kind of our edits. Yeah, so our joint handbook for next year, we'll finally have one middle high school handbook. So we worked, we co-chaired, you did this, right? You spelled my name wrong. So Sean and I co-chaired this one as well, and it was a lot of fun. So we had different teachers work with us. We had Tammy Johnson, Jasvir McIntosh, Jillian Griffin, Stacy Waitner, as well as Michelle Nickerson and Ashley Doyle, our administrative assistants. We were happy that we had a nice kind of diverse group volunteer that is different department areas and also different grade levels. So that gives us a nice mix of math, allied arts, science, main office staff, grades all the way 6 to 12. So it was kind of the ideal group to work with to get a joint handbook going, grades 6 to 12, and have to give them a lot of credit. We did a lot of work bi-weekly, and they came prepared and excited and ready to go the whole time. So working with them was great. So our goals and action items for this committee was obviously to create a multi-grade level, grade 6 to 12 team to review our current handbook. We completed a fit gap analysis for the combined new handbook. So Sean and I really looked at seeing, what does the middle school handbook say? What does the high school handbook say in certain policies? Where are they different? Where can we align? Where do we need to stay a little different, just based upon the developmental levels and all of that? Obviously, when you have grades 6 to 12, you have 11, 12-year-olds and 18-year-olds. Things have to be a little bit different for everybody. We created an action plan to combine the high school and middle school handbook, to create one handbook for all students. We've communicated with staff members to obtain their feedback. We didn't just want to say, this was the group that worked on the handbook, we decided this is it. The teachers worked really well, kind of going back to their colleagues to say, this is what we're thinking, what do you think? When we were close to completion, we again just put out kind of like an all-call to everybody that said, this is our draft handbook, this is what we're thinking, please give us feedback. And we were able to go back as a committee and bounce ideas off of each other from there and where, see kind of the trends amongst the staff, what they would like to see and what they don't want to see. And we've prepared it to present to you right now. So the first change we have in our draft handbook, Ms. Cabral back there has worked really hard on a vision of the graduate for us. Essentially, it's skills and proficiencies we want to see our students, when they come in as sixth graders, what we want them to gain when they leave us as 12th graders. So every teacher now has the vision of the graduate in the classroom. We have great signs throughout the building. We have a big sticker now in front of the cafeteria. So that's going to be right there in the handbook for the senior seat. The next, we're going to update staffing personnel charts kind of throughout the summer and when hires kind of get finalized and everything like that, just to make sure that the most updated faculty list is available. We'll update the school calendar, including exam schedules. AP exams will more or less be finalized. MCAS exams will probably be a lot of testing windows. We'll kind of put the windows there instead of just, I think we had TBA this year, which I think is important. At least we'll see, kind of get those testing windows in there, which we didn't have last year. And also, please, this is a very long document, stop me whenever with questions. It might be hard to remember to go back what you were thinking at the very beginning. On page 17, it says, change MCAS requirements. What that means is, we still have the old language. What the scores meant, it was proficient needs improvement, warning exceeds, it's now moved on to meeting, does not exceed expectations. So we're just going to change that verbiage in there. We had guidance to look at, the 90% attendance rule, which is, at the high school level, you need to attend 90% of your classes to earn credit. So they looked at that, and my belief is that we are sticking with that as well, based upon the presentation Sean just spearheaded on chronic absenteeism, as well as they looked at the rule of, if you do need to attend summer school at the high school level for a class, your grade needs to be 70% or higher to move on to the next course. So we're going to keep that in there, there as well. Next, on page 23, I know that we've talked about wind block. Last year, we moved wind block out of lunch. It just kind of made the most sense with the flow of the day to move it after lunch. So we're taking out the words and have their lunch because it's no longer during lunch block. Dress guidelines is something we essentially completely revamped. And that was something that was very, it was great. It was a great conversation. And the teachers that came really wanted to focus on that. So we had a really great kind of full meeting discussing on it. And the biggest things are, we want students to dress appropriate for school. So you can dress casually and comfortably for school, and just wear clothing we have in here and accessories that aren't destructive to school property. Clothing can have drawings, tattoos, accessories that display or promote negative messages. These can include drug, gang, weapon, alcohol, or tobacco-related information, obscenities, put-down stereotypes, sexual innuendos, offensive words or graphics. And we reserve the right to talk to a student about their clothing, ask students to go home and change. We have plenty of clothes in the main office, Crusader, be respectful, be responsible shirts. We had Crusader football, Super Bowl t-shirts that students were receptive to changing into this year when we would ask them to do so. Things we've added to the code of conduct, being a middle, having one middle high school handbook, last year we realized that a lot of middle school teachers do something called take-home detentions. Instead of having a student stay after, they have a written form that is essentially like a processing form. It has you reflect on your behavior. You get it signed by a parent or guardian. I know, having worked at the high school level, I never thought of this. So we wanted to put that in here for all teachers. Just a, you know, something in their repertoire to use when it comes to their code of conduct in their classroom. So we just wanted to include that. We included lunch detentions this year because we have found it is very effective if a student is misbehaving in the cafeteria to take that social aspect away for a little while and sit in my office or Sean's office or one of the offices we have. It's been an effective deterrent at the middle school level. I think you would agree at the high school level as well. So we wanted to put that in the handbook as well. Office detentions, we said, we kind of changed it to, failure to report to office detention will result in a Saturday school. We don't do extended school currently at the high school. We've transformed it into a Saturday school, so we just wanted to reflect that as well. And then we wanted to update what Saturday school is. So our Saturday school, we have an advisor Saturday mornings that comes in from 8:00 to 11:00. Students come to the main door at 8:00 o'clock, they're let in, they're encouraged to bring work, stuff to do. It's not just a sit there and be quiet. The advisor works with them to get caught up, so it's restorative. It's not just a punitive, sit there and be quiet. We would like them to get some stuff done to be in the best position as possible Monday morning to come back in all of their classes. Mr. McGinnis had a really great idea. We, in, you know, we're trying to transform it to more of a restorative justice model and reforms to discipline. So we've been doing a lot of service to the community. I know we have our community service requirements in place, but just restoratively, it does make more sense in some infractions, instead of saying, you're an in-school suspension, but to correct the behavior based upon an element of community service to the school or the community as a whole. Class cuts of directed study. So we just added that the first class cut will result in an after-school detention, and then the office will determine appropriate consequences. From there, a minimum of an after-school detention for additional class cuts. Previously, it just said, discipline will move forward from there. We wanted to define what that was a little bit more. Defiance, again. So administration will decide on the level of discipline, subsequent consequences may result in more severe consequences, instead of saying, subsequent offenses may result in more severe consequences. Just kind of giving a little bit more definition to what we've been doing the last two years together. Yeah, use of electronic equipment. We just kind of changed the verbiage. It didn't really, electronic equipment use of, didn't make a lot of sense to us. So use of electronic equipment would be the new words. Food and drinks, Mr. McGinnis and the group and I really wanted to put in, Carver Middle High School does not allow food deliveries of paid delivery services, such as DoorDash, Grubhub, Uber Eats, Instacart, vendors and restaurants. The point of that is, Mr. McGinnis and I are not trying to be jerks. We just don't want a person that we don't know coming on campus, leaving a package by a mysterious door. We just don't think that's in the best interest of student safety. So if a student does do that, we reserve the right to grab that package. We put it in the back.
Do you have enough lunch?
You know, sometimes. We assign a consequence. We assign a consequence, and, you know, we're not keeping the food. We do assign a consequence and do let the kids get it after. But we do not hold responsibility for any lost wages or any lost monetary value if that food sits there for too long and it's just not worth eating anymore.
Isn't that crazy? Like, did you ever think that would be something you have to formally address with a policy?
No.
Modern, like, that's progress, right?
Yeah.
It's been something that we've worked on together the last couple of years, so we just really wanted to put it in writing.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that it's in writing, that it's clear. It sets that expectation, so thank you for that. Which is just ridiculous, but you know. I know, it's not. They do, yeah, they do. But it's just, it's just something, you know, one of those things you never think of, right?
When it comes to forgery, we just want to make sure that students aren't forging dismissal or absent notes from parents or guardians. So if that's the do so, we're going to decide in after-school. We can range from after-school suspension, after-school detention to suspension. Discipline for each individual case will be decided by the administrator. Gambling of any kind is prohibited, so we just wanted to define kind of what that was a little bit more, so any violation of any sort could result in disciplinary action, again, including up to suspension. Leaving school as well. The first offense could result in a short-term suspension. Further violations will increase the amount of disciplinary action.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Katie.
Sorry, I couldn't figure where you're coming from.
A lot of these are going right to suspension? And that's a concern, since, isn't that not allowed anymore?
Katie, well, I think we missed the very first part of the question.
I thought you said after-school suspension. Did you say after-school suspension?
A lot, a lot of what I'm hearing is, could include suspension or will be suspension.
Katie, just for clarification on that, the verb, it says up to. So that, what you don't want to do is, you don't want to limit it to what it is. You want to look at what the case is. And remember, suspensions, if they are on in-school, they're receiving education-based learning within that in-school suspension. So the after-school suspension correct is something the state went against.
Right, and the school.
I was just concerned about the last one, because it sounded like that was the first, like, the go-to, and that, I, that worried me, but as long as it's up to.
I think the language says, these behaviors will be subject to disciplinary action, up to and possibly. So the up to and possibly are, you know, to.
Okay, thank you.
Including a suspension of 10 days in the first offense. And ultimately, you know, that, we are, the school is following the regulations around the concept of seeking alternatives to suspension. And then that, you know, that law actually then has specific examples of when the school does have the right to go immediately to suspension, not to offer an alternative. And has to define in writing the ways in which, the reasons why a suspension is appropriate for the first offense. But I think the language here is still very open to, and certainly the school has taken that focus of trying to reduce suspensions and to follow the guidelines under the law.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So when it came to the topic of profanity and verbal abuse, Mr. McGinnis and I and the committee wanted to include what we consider to be toxic language and define that a little bit. So we include that as any language involving racial, sexual, or ethnic slurs, which is derogatory language used to verbally abuse a student, staff member. We just don't find that to be appropriate in school. So we wanted to define that in there. It's a stance that Mr. McGinnis and I have taken since, and I'm sure that it's been here before us, but that's something that we've been working hard to the last two years, just to make sure that that has no place in our building. So wanted to define what that was there in our joint handbook as well, because it's something that we've been passionate about. Restroom use abuse of, changed to abusive restroom use. Just the verbiage didn't kind of coincide there. And we just said, students are entitled to a clean, safe, private, smoke-free restroom. Students who loiter in the restroom are going to be asked to move on and may face disciplinary consequences from there. Search and seizure. We reserve the right at the middle high school to go through personal effects like backpacks, bags, or items, as long as it's subject to reasonable search and seizure. When a school staff has reasonable suspicion that search of an item might produce evidence of a violation of school rules. In addition, in an event of health and safety emergency, students and their personal effects are subject to search and seizure. Just on a systematic basis, we want to make sure that our school environment is as safe as possible. And if we have reason to believe going through someone's belongings could make sure that our school remains safe, we're going to reserve the right to always do so. We've included under the smoking use of tobacco, times are changing. We've included nicotine and vaping products to kind of fit under there as well as they weren't there before.
And just to double-check, we also changed the violation for second and third.
Yeah, so we've worked with our drug-free communities grant coordinator, who's been very helpful in this. So before, if you get caught with a nicotine or vaping product, you're suspended for a day. Second offense is two days, third offense is three days, and so on from there. Like was just said, we're looking for alternatives to suspension. So working with our drug-free community grant coordinator, the first offense is up to one day of in-school suspension, completion of an online course in meeting with the district specialist. The online course is something that students can take with the coordinator from home in an office, kind of where we are, maybe when they're serving their consequence. And the online course really just kind of goes through the dangers of vaping addiction, things of that nature. So we're looking for restorative justice practices, instead of just saying, go away, we'll see you in a day. Go away, okay, that didn't work, we'll see you in two days. The second violation could be up to a two-day in-school suspension, completion of an online course and meeting with the district specialist. Again, and third would be up to three days of in-school suspension, completion of the course and more meeting with the specialists. In some cases, the drug-free coordinator would then meet with families. In certain cases, just to kind of make sure everybody's on the same page and as much education is going into those situations as possible. Unauthorized use to the locker room. Really, the only reason you need to be in our locker rooms is if you're getting ready for a gym class. We don't, students don't need to go and hang out there between classes or before, after school to get ready for practice or drop off their belongings. So we just, that's a policy that we've had, and we're just kind of memorializing it there in writing. The next part goes into absences, what we've been talking about earlier. So if a student's absent from school, he or she is not allowed to participate in athletic, in extracurricular activities unless it's fused by the principal, high school assistant principal, or designee. If a student's absent on a Friday, they need to get permission to participate over the weekend. If a student is tardy or dismissed on a half-day, they're considered to be absent and may not participate that day. And this is all co-curricular activities, so dances, spectator events of athletics, choral events, band, any extracurricular, co-curricular activity that we have in place that day. If students do, after a conversation with us, participate in the extracurricular activity, after we've ruled them not to be eligible to do so, they could face disciplinary consequence in accordance with the code of conduct.
This is a super small thing, but would it be possible, instead of using the he slash she, to just use they to be like all-inclusive of students?
Absolutely. Thank you. The next page, on page 46, we have student organizations. So we just updated what our student organizations are. Currently, we're not operating a newspaper, peer helpers, or peer mediators. And then we've added down below, Mr. Neef, things that we are currently operating that were not there. Underneath that, we updated our athletics with what we currently offer. So we've added two esports seasons and a girls' ice hockey team. So they are now in there as well. We then talked about how physicals can be picked up. Physicals are valid for 13 months through athletics. And then, everything has to be turned into the athletic director prior to tryouts for that sports season. And we've changed all athletic grades from six to 12 to seven to 12, because seventh to 12th graders can participate in our athletic programs. In some instances, others are eight to 12. Daily attendance. The bell starts at 7:25, before it was 7:40. So we updated that as well. We no longer have homeroom, or for grades eight to 12, it's not homeroom. Six to seven are. So we said that students need to be in their first period class by 7:25. Failure to report to first period class or the main office is going to result in an attendance email being sent home to families, saying, your student's not here, just so you know, as well as a call. Tardiness to school is something that we talked about. So we're recommending that at the high school, it stays with the five, 10, 15. Five unexcused tardies is an office detention. 10 is a Saturday school. 15 would be social probation, where you can't participate in co-curricular activities for the remainder of that term. We're also recommending grades six to eight, for the reasons we talked about earlier, would stay five, every five would be an office detention. Tardiness to class. So if a student at the high school level is more than 15 minutes late to class, they can lose credit for that class period. And if they are too, miss, if it's a full-year class at 17, you lose credit. If it's a half-year class at nine, you lose credit. So our recommendation is, we stay with that 15-minute rule as well going into next year. If you are tardy to class, you need to have a pass or stop in the main office to get a pass to go to that class. Dismissals. So this goes into what we talked about earlier. So our ultimate goal is to make sure that students are in class and learning as much as possible. So we are proposing that we have a similar system to tardies, where if a student at the high school level is dismissed five times, it's an office detention. 10 times is a Saturday school. 15 times is social probation. Again, these are unexcused. If you have a doctor's appointment, we understand. Sometimes you can only get that timeframe. Dentist, we understand. Court, they're going to tell you when to come. It's not really a choice. So if you can provide documentation that that's where the student was, that would be excused. We also understand that sometimes we need to go home, right? Sometimes, we're not always going to get that doctor's note, which is why we're going to do five, 10, and 15, just to make up for those short amount of times that students might need that. We're also recommending that, at the middle school level, it's consistent with the tardy policy, where every five is an office detention. That's new this year, but I think the data, we think that the data we showed earlier shows that I think we need to take a stance on unexcused dismissals. Excused absences. We are proposing to you that.
Skip family vacations.
Skip family vacations. So the change we're having here, thank you, Mr. Neef. Carver Middle High School, grades six to 12 is not obligated to reschedule a midterm or a final exam for a family vacation. We hope that, given the dates ahead of time, families can work around those times. And, you know, sixth and seventh graders aren't taking midterms and finals. It's more of an eight to 12 thing, but should somebody want to do some form of assessment that time of year, not obligated to change that date for a vacation. Excused absences. Our proposal is that we put the timeframe of 30 calendar days to get a note for any excused absence. That way, you know, at the end of the semester or end of the year, we're not trying to get a lot of kind of letters in at one time, just for, I think clerical purposes would be very, very helpful for us. Unexcused absences due to trudency. We're going to add, in addition, a student will be assigned a disciplinary action, including up to a short-term suspension for continued trudency to school. Unexcused absences from class due to trudency, first offense office is at your Saturday school. And then we'll deem on each kind of individual basis where we go from there if that continues to be an issue with individual students. We've added in-school suspension to academic consequences for poor attendance. Student absent notification program. So at the commencement of each year, parents and guardians will be sent a notice of instruction how to inform school of student absences and reasons for those absences. This notice will require parent or guardian to furnish the school with a homework or other emergency telephone number where they can be contacted during the school day. So just trying to get on the same page and making sure that we're getting students to school as much as possible. On page 61, you guys are having a second reading in a little bit. We're going to add the school districts or school, Carver Public Schools' new policy on prohibiting bullying. Yeah, we'll have that there. Yeah, we're adding vaping or smoking, instead of smoking. Times are changing. So students have easier access to vapes. So we wanted to add that in there as well. And then, we had the nurses look at the health policy. So for training around health policies, it said marching band director. We have the band director. So we've taken marching out. We had each school on their health policy. We're doing Carver Middle High School, as we have one handbook now. And then, we no longer, in the nurse's office, do the old-school yellow health cards. It's an online system, so we've just reflected that change. Prescription drugs. So if a student needs access to medication, it's given to the nurse and the nurse distributes it. We've added and/or EpiPen to things that nurses have with them for individual students, things that they would need medically, so. I guess we should have the nurse as well. They kind of totally updated their section, which was really helpful for us. Again, just kind of using the acceptable medication that's available in the nurse's office to students. Only nurses or a trained staff member will administer an EpiPen according to a physician's order for students that are in need of that. Under illnesses, we took out, all accidents should be reported promptly to the nurse. Yeah, just, we're going to do, the nurses do vision and hearing screenings during one middle school grade and one high school grade for students at the middle high school. Took out that part about if a visioner's screening annually. We kind of described what, or defined what that was a little bit more. Yep, for the nurse. Field trip medication. Carver Middle High School provides an environment that reduces the presence of latex products, so going non-latex as much as possible. I think we see that a lot at pep rallies, so making sure that we have non-latex balloon options. Meal program in the cafeteria. So that talked about how original, when, the last time, I think we updated this, it was talking about how much each lunch and breakfast costs. As of now, it's free, so we wanted to reflect that as well. And parking for students.
This is the last one.
This is the last one. So parking for students.
Yeah, parking is the end of the road.
A parking pass is $50. Mr. McGinnis has decided that the high school, if students get their license after April 1st, that'll be reduced to $20, so they don't have to pay the full-year fee.
I'm sure they'll appreciate that.
That was a lot. So any questions or?
Just for my own information, when it comes to the take-home detention, and I love having processing sheets. So how is that, because it didn't really specifically say where it goes. Does it go, is it at the teacher's discretion to review it after? Or does it go to the guidance counselor? Where does that go?
It goes to the teacher. So for the inflection in the classroom, the teacher would assign it side of home, and the student's responsibility would be to reflect, have it signed by a parent or guardian, and then provide it back to the teacher the next day to review.
Like reviewed, or just like handed in?
The teachers that are doing it now review them and might have additional conversations as needed.
And I could tell you, administrators, we've given that out as well, and we review it. And then we'll have a follow-up conversation with the students just to show that we reviewed it and make sure that they were on point, that they got the understanding of why they got it.
Okay. That's important. That was a lot. Thank you for all of that work and for, I think.
Thank you for all of that work and for, I think the, I think the windows will be helpful to people, so at least give them an idea of when things are coming. I appreciate the in-depth definition, because I don't, I think things have just changed so much, and I think a lot of it, a lot of, some of these things parents just aren't aware of. And I think it's good to make it clear for the students to understand, for families to understand. So thank you to you and everyone that was on the committee for all of your efforts to combine this. I know I was personally a little hesitant when I heard that it was, you were looking to combine it into one, and I was like, oh, wait a minute, because there are definitely differences between middle school and high school. So thank you for paying attention and realizing that, you know, like you said, an eleven-year-old and an eighteen-year-old definitely need, you know, different parameters. So I appreciate your making sure that that's a part of it. Does anyone have any questions? You need a motion to accept?
I move to approve the newly combined and revised middle high school student handbook.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I think we did, the only change that was discussed was Corinne's addition of, of actually looking at the handbook in its entirety to make sure we're moving he, she, and adding they, them. So I think that would be maybe the only-
Do you want me to change my motion?
Yeah, we put, I think that should be included in the motion, because that wasn't what was presented this evening.
I move to approve the newly combined and revised middle high school student handbook with the proposed changes from the student advisory committee of changing he, she to they.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Katie, thank you for the input. Roll call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly Mimi, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Callum, aye.
Thank you both very much. And please bring our gratitude back to your committee, I know it's a lot of work going through the handbook, so, and you made a lot of changes and a lot of good updates, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Shonda, thanks for being here. Two presentations this evening.
Right, next time, we'll look forward to those fishnets. Okay, so, high school handbook, so that brings us to school choice for the 2024, 2025 school year.
At our last meeting, the school committee voted to approve that the district participated in school choice in kindergarten and in grades nine through twelve, opening five slots in each grade level. Since that time, there has been a parental petition to the school committee to consider offering school choice slots in the fifth grade. You know, currently, our projection for next year is the fifth grade class would be one hundred and thirty-six students with six teachers. At the time of the original presentation by the administration, the administration did not advocate for or support the addition of school's choice slots in the fifth grade. And I'll go back a little bit on our rationale, is that we've taken a general approach over the last several years of adding, having five school choice slots in kindergarten and having those slots in that position, and then those students get to stay and become part of that class. And we haven't offered other additional school choice slots in our elementary school at any time since the district's been doing school choice. And the reason why is we don't want those classes to continue to grow over time. You know, we almost start with that fresh infusion of five students in kindergarten, and then we know that's going to be our class to the elementary school. Because if you continue, if you're continually adding students, you know, that may have us grow beyond capacity. The other, the other concern is something to be thoughtful of, is that once a school choice family is part of school choice, they do allow to bring in siblings. So for example, and then I just check, probably went out of order there. In terms of our rationale for nine through twelve, it's starting in ninth grade is when we begin to lose students, because we lose, we occasionally lose students to rising tide in, in fourth to fifth grade. We occasionally lose students to rising tide from fifth to sixth grade. But really, our, the biggest change in terms of our enrollment is eighth to ninth. So eighth to ninth grade, students go to Old Colony, they have the options of private schools and charter schools, and the highs, at the high school level, there's just a lot more options for students. So we generally have, lose twenty-five to thirty students, eighth to ninth grade. So then from our perspective, we thought it made sense to offer school choice and the opportunity to fill our roles a little bit more at the high school level. And then the other thing that's been a benefit, which I understand this is what the parent is asking for in this situation, is that at the high school level, it's been a benefit to allow students to stay in the district, who've been in the district throughout their career. And many of our high school's school choice students in grades ten, eleven, or twelve are students who their family moves in grades ten, eleven, or twelve and want to finish their career in Carver. So my suggestions would be, so at this time, the administration does not support adding school choice in the grade five, but ultimately, that's the decision of the committee. And my suggestion would be if the, if the committee was going to consider adding school choice slots, that they, we'd be consistent and add five slots in grade five, for a couple of different reasons. Number one, we have to remember, school choice is a lottery system. So once you open up those slots, you have to publicly advertise them, and if you only open up one slot or two slots and four people apply, the person who made the petition may not even be selected for school choice. Same thing could happen with five, but realistically, my, our experience has been that we wouldn't get, I'd be really surprised if you opened up five school choice slots in grade five if we had eight people apply. We could though, that's a possibility, and then it's a lottery, it's, and maybe the person who put in would not be selected. So from my perspective, you know, adding only one or two slots wouldn't make sense if the committee was going to consider it, that they would consider being consistent with what we've done as a district. But as I said, at this time, the administration would not support adding school choice slots in grade five. I guess the only other thing I would point out, just from perspective, and maybe the committee isn't always aware of this, but usually, and it, but tell me, you could counter this argument I'm about to make, is that usually there are one or two families a year who are interested in school choice that we don't offer school choice in. And usually, it's at the elementary level. So this is a conversation that we have with families, there's one or two families a year. And I think the committee has to be thoughtful about that, that if they were to decide to open up to those types of requests, I think that would establish a precedent that the committee would have to be consistent with. So next year, if a third grade family was really interested in maintaining school choice, that, and the decision was this year, well, based on a parental request that we did fifth grade, I think next year, we'd have to do third grade, or sixth grade, or seventh grade, or whatever the grade happened to be. And that does, it doesn't come a lot, I'm not saying it's ten families a year. It's one, it comes up one or two families a year where this consideration is brought before. So that's kind of my background. I'll answer any questions people have. The decision has to be made by June first, so that's when we have to notify the state of where we'll have schools, because they actually publicize it statewide of where there are actual school choice options available. And then, you know, certainly if the committee decides to add slots in fifth grade tonight, we will add that on to our advertisements that have gone out, making school choice slots available, and we'll follow the process. And if we have more than five applicants, or obviously, if my recommendation was five, the school committee can set whichever number they choose, and, you know, we would, we would go from that. So that's, that's kind of the background on the request, and I'll take any questions people have or go from there.
Do we have any numbers of children that we will be losing to rising tide this year? Because I know last year was probably around five.
I don't, I don't know, I don't have a number. They're, sure-
Do they know that yet?
There'll be students who will go into rising tide from fourth to fifth grade. And obviously, the parent, the parent, the family that's requesting is already counted in that number of one hundred and thirty-six students, because they're currently here.
So sure, right now, all that we have is one student that is confirmed going to rising tide for the fifth, fifth grade. We don't know how many students applied, we don't know how many of them were accepted. But what we have done, as we do every March and April, is communicate with rising tide, and right now, it's just one student.
Okay, thank you.
And then again, we don't know if they'll actually go. Sometimes they change their mind and they stay with us.
Historically, have we had fifth grade positions open?
No, I, we have never had school choice available in fifth grade. There was a couple of years, two or, I'm not, I don't know the exact number, there were more than one year, a couple of years, where we did have school choice six through twelve. And then we made a decision to not do the middle school level anymore and to maintain nine through twelve.
And I just ask that people speak directly into their microphones, because I can't hear you-
Sorry, Katie.
If you're not, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
No worries, Katie. We want, we want to make sure that you hear everyone properly, so thank you for letting us know.
And the class size is what, twenty-four? With one thirty-six?
So I'm also assuming-
So if you added five slots and you went to one forty, assuming that the family that's requesting was in that number-
Yeah.
You know, sort of pulling out my calculator, one forty divided by six would be twenty-three point three would be the average class size, so twenty-three or twenty-four.
So I'm also assuming that if we open up five, then there's a gap, six, seven, and eight, that won't have school choice.
Correct, six, seven, and eighth grade would not have school choice, or would one, two, three, and four.
Right, we'd have K, five, and then nine through twelve. This is a tough situation.
Yeah, alter, ultimately, certainly, we're supportive, and we want to have students stay, and we're happy that families want to stay. And sometimes we have to deal with families who try to stay, who we don't have school choice for, and occasionally, we do have to ask families to leave because, and I always say in those situations, I said, I really, I hate to do it, but ultimately, you know, this is, this is the policy of the school district, we have to enforce that policy, that we're not school choice in grade whatever, three, four, or five, and, or two, and you've moved, or seven, and, and you've moved out of the district, and we need, we need your students to enroll. Generally, we've, we're pretty lenient in terms of having natural breaks for that, most of the time, the end of the school year. So we'll have conversations and say, certainly, you can remain through the end of the school year, but beginning next school year, whatever grade you're moving into, you need to, you know, enroll in the district in which you're currently residing. And we do, we do have those conversations with families.
Thank you.
I'll come back if you need me.
Thank you.
Or I can stay.
Does anyone else have any questions? I mean, this is my eighth year, gosh, where have they, where's the time gone in so many ways? I don't think we've ever been petitioned before.
So I will say that the school committee has not been directly-
Right, yeah.
-petitioned. Those conversations have generally gone through my office, and I've had those conversations with families, sometimes it happens at the building level. Very, very often, what happens is they, they may start at the building level, and then Ruby or Christine or whoever the principal was at that time says, ultimately, I can't make, I, I can't make a decision on this, I can't just tell you, you can stay, but you can certainly talk to the superintendent. And then families reach out to me, we have a similar discussion, and I say, I always say to them, well, the school committee will be considering school choice in April or May, because we have to make a decision by June first, and also, it'll be coming up on our agenda, and you can certainly go to the school committee to petition something, you know, to advocate for something different. But this is our sense of what the, this is my sense of what the recommendation will be for this upcoming school year. So that's generally, generally the flow of the conversation.
Can I ask how this affects our budget? Like-
Budgetarily, the impact is minimal. I mean, obviously, it counts as an additional student, so we get one student's worth of chapter seventy-eight, additional chapter seventy-eight. And in terms of, it's not going to require us to hire more staff, so certainly, we could, we could enroll five more students, or whatever number of students the school committee decides to set in the fifth grade and not change our staffing. But the concern, my, my response, that goes by the concern of precedence of if, you know, so the, the concept of our current structure, which we've had for many years, is that we've had that influx, that influx of students in kindergarten, and then we know where it's going to be. And then if on a regular basis, you're changing that, then your numbers may grow, and they may grow to a point of that you have to add staff. And that's always, when we talked about school choice, I think we talked about this, that's always the fine line when we look at school choices, adding enough students so that we don't have to add staff. But then, because, then we'll be on the positive side of school choice. But if we add students or continue to add students, that we would have to increase staffing, then the benefits that we're receiving from being a school choice district would be diminished. In terms of this specific request in front of the committee, the economic impact would actually be positive on a very, very, very small amount. I can't give you the exact number, but, but it'd be a very small amount, but it would actually have a positive impact, because we'd maintain a student.
Okay, and then in four years from now, would our choice, our students choosing to enroll in, they would be affected by this decision tonight, correct? Because if those spots are already filled-
School, school choice is year by year, but once a student is enrolled via school choice, they get to maintain, they get to stay for their entire school career.
Right, but we wouldn't be opening another, like, it would be the five we opened in fifth grade, if, if we filled all five of those, then we wouldn't be opening five more in ninth grade in four years.
Yeah, that, that, you could approach it that way.
Yeah.
You, you could make, you could make that, we'd have, we'd all have to remember that that's what we decided to do-
Yeah.
-four years from now. We'd have to say, oh yeah, remember, we added five kids in fifth grade, so we're not going to add five kids in ninth grade in three years or four years. You could certainly do that. Honestly, my general, my general impression of that would be, I think nine through twelve has been beneficial for us, because the, we're always going to have, and we've had this discussion many times, and I've always been very supportive, we're gonna, we're always going to have students go to Old Colony, that's just a reality. And it's an appropriate reality, we should have students go into Old Colony. So the high school is always going to have more flexibility, unless the town had some huge major, you know, huge demographic shift, which I don't see happening anytime in the near future. So I think we'll always have availability at the high school level. And being very direct, we, we pulled out of the middle school level, we stopped waiting at the middle school level, A, for class size, because the students haven't left yet, and B, we've, sometimes, we found that students who are looking to school choice at the middle school level, their reasonings were based on maybe some struggles that they were facing, beginning to face at the secondary level in school. But very often, those challenges came with them, and it wasn't necessarily the school system that they were enrolled in, it was just some individual circumstances, and that we, and there were concerns about some of the students that we were bringing in through school choice at the middle school level. And we talked about at that time, when we cut middle school off from school choice and went back just to nine through twelve, I, as I said, I think we only did it for two or three years, I don't remember the exact number. It was definitely more than one year when we did middle school, but it wasn't more than three. And so, but I don't, Katie, I don't think you're, I think we could, you could enroll students via school choice in fifth grade this year and still enroll students in ninth grade when this fifth grade class gets to ninth grade, I think the numbers would be supportive of that.
So then it would have, would have ten open spots for ninth grade.
So does a student, sorry, Katie, if a student is accepted in school choice, do they now, do they count the next year, or do they not count for school choice?
They count, so, these are new, every year, it's new enrollees.
Okay, so once you're in, you're here-
Once you're in, you're here as long as you want to stay.
So when the ninth grade class comes, or when the fifth grade class gets to ninth grade, there's five spots that won't be affected by those students.
Right.
I think that's what she said.
Yeah, so, right, so technically, in the way we've been doing it the last few years, the, when a student enters ninth grade, there's five spots in that grade, then there's five more spots when they get into tenth grade, there's five more spots when they get into eleventh grade, and then there's five more spots when they get into twelfth grade. Historically, our high school, school choice, we haven't filled those roles. When we looked at the report last time, I think we had twenty, we had twenty slots at the high school level for four grades, and I think we, I think the number was twelve, we filled twelve of the twenty. So we, you know, those slots generally go unfilled, because the reality is a lot of kids don't want to-
Transfer out.
They don't want to transfer out of high school either. And that's why I said, we, what we really find kids is, what we really find in those situations is our students who in their sophomore or junior year, their, who've been in the school district their entire lives, and then they, they just, you know, they decide to stay through school choice, and I actually think that's been a real positive of school choice at the high school level, which certainly is what the family is advocating for here. And I, I see that, I see that they, I could see where you could have like a, he's kind of speaking out of both sides, saying, well, don't do that, but it's great at the high school level. But I just think it's, I'm more concerned problematically that the, once you open this up at the elementary, we're going to start seeing other requests at other grade levels. And then, and I feel like the committee would have to be consistent with that. So next year, when you have a third grade parent who wants to stay, you're going to have to open up five slots in third grade, and then you're going, that's where I think over time, we're going to see that growth.
So why would we have to?
Well, because I felt like-
We don't have to do anything.
Well, you don't have to do anything, but I think, but I think you have to be consistent from the standpoint, if you, once you say, we're going to accept- Yeah, what would be the, what would be the rationale?
However, we've never been petitioned before, and this family's trying to do it the right way, by not, like, by petitioning the school committee.
Mm-hmm.
And technically, with school choice too, we're not adding anything to the budget via transportation-wise either, because they are required to provide transportation.
Nope. They have to find their own transportation. Yep, absolutely.
Yep. I understand that. It's definitely a gray area. The thing that can, does concern me, that we agree with Mrs. Neef, is, is the precedent, is how would we be able to say no to someone that were to come next, I mean, next month? Or...
Well, next month would, next month would be easy, because June 1st is the cutoff. This is, this is the last opportunity.
June 1st is the cutoff.
This is the last opportunity.
Have we ever been petitioned before? Ever?
This, like I said, um, no...
Not my, not my eight years, anyway, but...
Not formally in writing. I think, I, I can't say...
I know conversations have been had in the past, but have they ever actually taken the extra step to come to the school committee and ask?
I think, I think people have come to the school committee and spoke in public comment, and said, "We'd like you to consider school choice at the square level." At the time, it was on the agenda for that meeting.
Yep.
But not, I, in my time as superintendent, I am not aware of a written position to the school committee. I mean, ultimately, if the, if there's no motion, the committee took no action, things would stay the way they are. So the two options the committee has right now is for someone to make a motion to approve school choice in grade 5, and see if it gets a second, or to take no action. And if they take no action, we would stay with our current school choice in kindergarten in grades 9 through 12. I don't think we have to take a vote to not do school choice.
Okay.
That's my, that's my opinion. You could, I mean, you could do that, too. Someone could, someone could also make a motion to let's not allow school choice in grade 5, but I don't think that, I don't think that has to happen. I think we just need, but, but if someone, if someone feels strongly about it, wants to make the motion, they can make the motion for the school choice in grade 5, and see if someone seconds it.
I do feel strongly about it, and I am going to make a motion, so I move that we open five school choice slots in grade 5.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion or any additional questions by anyone on the committee?
Just on the matter of precedent, this is kind of a evolve, or a revolving committee, right? So next year, five of us may not be sitting here. So I don't think past decisions would necessarily dictate future ones.
And hopefully, I'll be sitting here, and that I would say this is, I often say this is what we've done historically over time. So I would inform the members of the committee.
Oh, sure.
You know, what, what actions we've taken in the past.
But just in the, in the idea of justifying a, a future no decision, you know, we may vote on this in, you know, if you, if you asked this question last week, it might have been a different vote.
Right. And, right, in the reality, you're correct, that we could have, and say, "Hey, it's all, it's three different, it's two different committee members. The committee is constructed differently, and has a different opinion on this." That's, that could certainly happen next year.
That's worth it.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. Nope. Very valid point. I know it's a very, it's a, for me personally, it's a difficult, it's a difficult decision, because I know that it affects a student, a family, and we want to keep the students in Carver. But I do worry about setting that precedent. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Katie, it looks like you unmuted. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Did this motion include the number of slots we were opening?
I said 5.
Okay.
To keep it consistent.
And, yeah, I think you have to be concerned, because it's a lottery system. You can't do one or two, because if two people get applied, that person, that family could not be in it.
Doing something, just because that's the way it's always been done, too. And I feel like, I don't know, if this didn't work, we'd have the opportunity to vote it out next year.
Right. Because we consider the grades...
We do it every year.
Every year.
Every year, so...
Yeah, certainly, the five people who came in via school choice, or whatever the number is, if we opened up five slots and three families came in, they would get to stay.
Yeah.
But the committee next year could say, "Well, we shouldn't have done that. That was a bad decision," and have no school choice next year. Yep.
Right. Or say it was great, let's do it again.
Right. And say 5th grade was a good number.
It could go either way.
Right. You could build on my rationale and say, "Students leave from rising tide from 4th to 5th grade, so we should add a couple slots in 5th grade."
Any further discussion?
Anyone have any further discussion?
Still thinking.
Still thinking? Yeah, I mean, because I'm thinking for, for kids outside of the district, choosing in in 5th grade, like, that's such a pivotal year, that would be, I think, not to say that our educators couldn't work with students, but it's just, it's such a critical year that if we did have students coming from other districts, I think it would be a challenge, because 5th grade is clearly working hard to prepare those students for middle school. So I, I have reservations, but I, I understand the, the family tug side of it. I, I understand, I understand that. So that's personally what I'm, I'm thinking of, is the, that, you know, trajectory. In this particular circumstance, it's a student that's already here that's petitioning for this, so they would have that, you know, continuity and that consistency, and the teachers clearly would know this student very well. I'm thinking of other students coming in 5th grade, that's a, that's a transitional year, and...
For one year, they'll be in, in that school.
Yep.
That's kind of what I was just thinking.
For people from outside. Yeah. That's what, that, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Not clearly for this particular family, but just in, in general, and what would that, what would that mean to the makeup of our, our classes? And that's, that's where my mind is at. So I just thought I would share that with...
I, I do think there's a rationale to doing it at entry points.
Yep.
Like kindergarten, like 6th grade, like 9th grade. But I, but I also know there are districts that are, you can look on, you go on the state list.
Oh, absolutely. There are districts in every grade.
Well, and they have districts that are really odd.
Yeah.
You know, they have K, 3, 6, and 12, you know? And so they're, obviously, that committee had some rationale as why they selected those numbers.
Yes.
But if you go look at where, where is school choice available, it does, it's across the gamut of what districts do.
Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, so we should take this to a vote. So we'll do a rule call vote.
Ms. Sullivan, with hesitation, aye.
Jackie Lake, no.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, no.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, so the motion passes 3 to 2. So Mr. Neef will notify the community.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add it to our, the application process. We'll say there are five slots available in 5th grade. And Gina, what do we set as a deadline? We might have to reestablish the deadlines.
The deadline for that is...
June 3rd?
I believe it's the first weekend, June, right now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's usually the first Friday in June is what we set as the date, but we might have to push that back if we're going to add slots there.
The deadline is...
Sorry.
Sorry. My computer's like, taking a bit of time.
Right. Thank you, Mrs. West.
The deadline is June 7th.
Okay.
With the lottery to take place on June 10th. Should there be a lottery?
Yeah, so I, I think we'll probably keep that timeline, because it's already been publicized that way for the other grade levels. And June 7th still gives almost three weeks, 17 days, if we get that out tomorrow, in terms of where we advertise and make it available.
Yep.
So...
And really quickly, I just want to say that I appreciate the family petitioning us. I appreciate them advocating for their daughter, and please know that this is not, you know, a personal-level decision.
Right.
And that it is in no way a slight, and that I hope that things move forward the way that is best for your student. So we are here to support our community, so thank you for advocating and coming to us. It's part of why we're here. So just wanted to say that. So, okay, so that brings us to recreation committee appointments.
All right. Mary Ross and Carl Miller have both expressed interest in staying on as members of the recreation committee. Mary and Carl have served on the committee for several years. A motion and vote is required to reappoint them. At this time, they're the only two people who have expressed interest in joining the recreation committee.
Okay. I move to appoint Mary Ross and Carl Miller to the Carver Recreation Committee.
Aye, second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, abstain.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
The vote, the motion passes. I just want to say thank you to Mary Ross and Carl Miller for continuing to volunteer to serve on the Carver Recreation Committee. We all appreciate all of your efforts and all the amazing programs that you continue to bring to Carver. So thank you for your efforts. Carver's lucky to have you both, so thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to exciting policy second readings.
Okay, we have two policy se, uh, second readings this evening. The first one is Policy BHE, Use of Electronic Messaging by School Committee Members. This is our second reading of the policy. MAS-C has come out with the recommended revisions to this policy, and the recommended revisions removes two sentences from the policy, that the school committee chair, in consultation with the superintendent's schools, so annually designate a member of the central office staff, who will be copied on all electronic mail correspondence between among members, and the school members who do not have a computer or access to these messages shall be providing copies on a timely basis. This was the recommendation of MAS-C. There were, after the first reading, there were no proposed changes or revisions, either by the subcommittee or by the committee as a whole, in terms of the second part of it. We had some question about the first part of it, but we felt like it was okay, and the second part of it, every member of the committee gets a computer, so we didn't feel like that was an issue. So unless there's other questions, I, I would support a motion to approve the revisions to this policy.
Great. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay.
I move to approve the revision to Policy JICFB, Policy Prohibiting Bullying, as presented...
Oh, it's the one above it. Oh, sorry, BEG.
Oh, I'm sorry.
BEG.
It's 9:24, Kelly.
I know. It's been a very long day. I move to approve the revisions to Policy BHE, Use of Electronic Messaging by School Committee Members, as presented.
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Rule call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Okay, great. So that brings us to the next policy.
Just getting it up on the show.
Second reading of Policy JICFB, Policy Prohibiting Bullying.
So this is our second reading of Policy JICFB, Policy Prohibiting Bullying. As part of the work of the Bullying Prevention Intervention Task Force, we ask the school district's attorney to review our current policy on bullying. What we are presenting this evening are the recommendations by the district's attorney, and they have two recommendations. First, changing the word "will" to the word "may" when discussing discipline, and removing the word expulsion. In the same section, we would also add the phrase, "As well as consideration to alternatives prior to any exclusion from school." These changes are all recommended based on, reflect current changes in student discipline law, which we actually talked a little bit about tonight already. We had that conversation about, about a year and a half ago, the student discipline law changed, saying that school districts have to consider alternatives prior to suspension. So in essence, you can't have a policy that says something will lead to discipline, and that expulsion comes off the record, because in essence, really, now in Massachusetts, a student cannot be, does not, cannot be expelled in the old sense of the term, where they lose their entitlement to an education within the, within a school system. So the school has a legal responsibility to provide education to all students, no matter the discipline they're engaged in. So that's why those changes are, are in this document, to be reflective of current laws. And then the second addition is at the end, I believe, which is, add that the, add the principal of Desneville informed parents about DESI's, what's called PRS system, Program Resolution System, if they're concerned about how the district has managed bullying concern. Ultimately, parents, anyone engaged or brings a bullying concern forward, if they feel that the school district has not managed that bullying concern appropriately, they do have recourse beyond the school committee, which is go to DESI's PRS system. And so we're adding that language into this policy. And then if, so I recommend, we, we reviewed this after the first reading, there were no recommendations from the committee at that time to make changes, and, you know, I would move to approve these revisions as presented. And then, once this policy is updated, in our June 10th meeting, the bullying task force is going to be coming and presenting the total revision to the Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan, which includes adding this updated policy. I think we have, any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Now I'm going to get it right. I move to approve the revision to Policy JICFB, Policy Prohibiting Bullying, as presented this evening.
Aye, second.
We have a motion and a second? Okay, not hearing any further discussion. Rule call vote.
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Great. That passes. Thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to reports from the school committee. We have our reaffirmation of school committee protocols. You've done this in the past, when we've had new members join the committee. I think it's a good exercise for us to all remind ourselves of the reasons that we're here, and it's an opportunity for our new members to also learn a little bit more about our role and our commitment. So, was 2016?
So, so 2000, when I became superintendent, 2016, we met with the committee at that time and established these protocols.
So that was the year before I...
Yeah, so this is my, so my eighth year as the superintendent.
I feel like it's been longer. I don't know why. Right? I, I know, same. So anyway, okay, so I usually go through and read these really quickly. So Carver School Committee Protocols. For the purpose of enhancing teamwork among members of the school committee and between our school committee and the administration, we, the members of the Carver School Committee, do hereby commit ourselves to the following operating protocols. One, the school committee will represent the needs and interests of all children in the district. Two, the school committee will help establish the vision, create policies, and assure accountability. The superintendent will manage the schools and staff. Three, the school committee will consider best practice, public input, and financial Three, the school committee will consider best practice, public input, and financial impacts in their decision-making. Four, the school committee and the superintendent will facilitate goal-setting for the district. Five, the school committee will work towards continuous improvement in teaching and learning by clearly defining district goals, developing policies, and promoting achievement of all students. Six, the school committee will conduct its business through a set agenda. Emerging items will be addressed in subsequent meetings through agenda items. Seven, school committee will channel requests for information through the superintendent and the school committee chair, rather than directly to staff. The superintendent will ensure that each member has equal access to information. Eight, school committee members will work together to clarify and restate discussions in order to strive for full understanding. Nine, school committee members will recognize the single official vote of the board. Ten, the school committee will base our decisions on facts, vote our convictions, avoid bias, and uphold and support decisions of the majority of the committee who wants a decision is made. Eleven, the school committee will maintain trust and mutual respect between and among committee members, the superintendent, and the administration, by treating everyone with dignity and respect, even in times of disagreement. And twelve, the school committee recognizes the importance of working collaboratively with town officials to improve our school. I think, I love these, so thank you for putting these into place eight years ago.
Yeah, we actually worked in coordination with M A S C, so the M A S, M A S C field rep came out and met with myself, and the committee, it's a service they offer at the time, for new superintendents to work with the committees they'll be, you know, working for.
Yep, I think it's great, it's one of the, one of the benefits to being a member of M A S C. So anyway, does anyone have anything they would like to report before we adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, do we have to vote?
Historically, we voted to reaffirm them, you don't, you don't have to vote to reaffirm them, but historically, you have.
But let's, but let's do that, so let's make a, please make a motion to reaffirm the protocols.
I move to affirm the school committee protocols as presented this evening.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Rule call, vote, please?
Katie Sullivan, aye.
Jackie Lake, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye.
Bill Cullum, aye.
Excellent, okay, so now that that motion has passed, thank you, does anyone have anything they would like to report? No, okay, so, very, great, I know, it's, it's, we haven't had a nine-thirty meeting in a while, it's, it's been a while since we've had a meeting one this late. It's better than the elevens that we used to have, I, right, and we, we all feel you, Katie, we all feel you. So just super briefly...
If I was at home uncomfortable for, I'm glad it was this one.
Right? Super quickly, M A S C has a charting the course event coming up in Harwich. I'm not sure, Bill, if you registered for one or not yet?
I am registered, yes.
I will be attending that one, in hopes to meet some divisional members. M A S C has a lot going on, so I will have more of an update as we have some of our subcommittee meetings that are coming up over the next month, as well as nominations for positions on the M A S C executive board. And I hope a lot of members of the community will attend some of the events upcoming at the schools. The bleachers are open, as long as the weather cooperates, and graduation is outside, right? So I think it's a great opportunity for members of the community to go fill up those seats, see what it's like, and just celebrate the hard work of all of our students, and our teachers, and our staff, so. Congrats to everyone that's still out there competing, I think there are still some teams we have, like, in the playoffs, I know states are...
Well, the, and, the season hasn't ended yet, so the cutoff for a lot of sports is this Friday, this Saturday, and so state tournament for baseball, and, baseball is probably going to make the state tournament, they may be the only team that's going on in track, and the track athletes are continuing to...
Yes, states for track is Saturday, so good luck to everyone that's competing, and enjoy the rest of May, and I just don't know how we're here already, it's just crazy.
Eighteen years.
Anyway, right, I know, it's eighteen summers, eighteen Christmases, don't they go by in a blink? So, anyone, no one has anything to add, then, someone, please make a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the May 20th, 2024, open session of school committee.
Aye, second.[1770.81]